I'm waiting for the shield systems to go.
Oh, please forgive me. Ma'am, we're starting at 6:05.
That's right.
Well, it was published at 6:05.
Before you leave that scene, that is the clear. I had to get some sleep. I just check off and then move in. Yeah, I put it right.
I'd like to have everybody's attention for a minute, just so everybody knows. This meeting starts at 6:05. To do the public hearing and everything has to be after six o'clock. So, yes, we know it's six o'clock and we know that most of us are here at six o'clock, but it's going to start at 6:05 because that's when we have to start. Five more minutes.
I'm not a bad person. I'm not a bad person. All right, let's run them.
A family tree.
But then we can then access through our thing here all their stuff like.
Okay, that sounds wonderful. I'm all for going somewhere and seeing what's going on. Family tree.
You can do a nine generation, what they call a fan chart. You start here and they print you out this year of them and it's every generation as it gets bigger.
Sorry, because I don't have any of my parents and my grandparents.
Good evening and welcome to the Spalding County Board of Commissioners October 7th regular session. I would like to ask all to silence your cell phones and other electronic devices. This time I'd like to ask Commissioner Dutton to deliver the invocation and Commissioner Bolden to lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Please stand up for the invocation. Join me in prayer. Almighty, kind and gracious only Father, Father, we humbly come before you tonight to thank you for the wonderful opportunity we have to live in this amazing, amazing place. This great state, this amazing country that was divinely inspired. Father, we, we ask that the blessing that we have of this good weather today, that it will shine onto those that have so very recently had such foul weather, that the recovery efforts there will be swift, that the communities that are coming together to aid each other will show the brotherhood and fellowship that this country is founded on and that thy will be made manifest among men. Father, we, we ask a blessing for all the hostages that have been held over a year, that they will be released, that peace will reign in the Middle East, that peace will reign in Eastern Europe, that the wars and contentions that are stirred up by the adversary will leave the hearts of men and that we can turn towards you instead. Father, we ask a blessing on all of our first responders, fire personnel, EMTs, emergency responders, law enforcement, but also our, our linemen, our utility workers. Father, please keep them safe, keep them sanctified to thee, that they can return home safe at the end of their shifts to their families. Father, we ask for those that are sick and afflicted, that they will be healed if thy will so be. Father, we, we ask a blessing on our families who are away and we ask that thy spirit reign and rule in this meeting, that we can, through our actions tonight, be brought closer to thee, know thy will in our lives and the lives of those who live in Spalding County. Father, we ask all these blessings humbly in the name of our Lord and Savior and Redeemer, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
If you would, please join me in the pledge allegiance to our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item number four, public hearing. Conduct a public hearing of the 2024 milage rate. I will entertain, entertain a motion to enter into public hearing for second of the 24. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Oppose light sign, five zero, motion carries. We're in public hearing. At this time, I'd ask the county manager to present staff recommendations for the 2024 milage rate.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to present staff's recommendations this evening for our milage rate. I'd like to take a few minutes and just walk us through the presentation, some of the presentation we saw last time, but we'll, we'll move quickly through that, but just to give you some additional information. Here we go. Back in June of this year, we adopted our expenditure budget. Now it's time for us to adopt the millage rate in support of the revenue requirements to satisfy that expenditure budget. So, I want to start with how our properties are valued, and we do have our tax assessors here this evening, so they, they're going to update us here in just a little bit, so I'll move rather quickly through this section. But we do provide some indication for our citizens to see how the steps are for the evaluation process and what our tax assessor's office does for our community. They drive toward that uniform, uniformity and equalization for assessing the valuations of our property. So why is that important? Because this is the first year in three that the state sales ratio has been above the 38 percentile. That's important for us because it affords us the opportunity to do a few things that, that otherwise we would not be able to do, specifically charge our utility customers a fair market rate of 40% of the valuation for the utilities that sit within our community. If we don't fall above that 38 percentile, some of the issues that we run into or the state intervenes, so they come in and they take a look at how we are doing our valuations, and they could assess penalties against us, but they could also come in and reassess our processes and do audits on how we operate as a tax assessor's office. It creates inequities for those who own property if we do not fall above the 38 percentile. It creates revenue shortfalls for the, for the county's services. It also increases the number of appeals and public trust suffers. Let's see if we can get this to work. All right, if you will go forward one. Thank you. Is it frozen? Why is it important for the tax assessors to remain above the 38 percentile? Again, it is in compliance with state law. It creates fair distribution with respect to tax across all of our properties. And one of the things that, that it's important for us to consider is that when we fall below that 38 percentile and we're not able to charge fairly against our utility service providers, that impacts me as a homeowner for the taxes that I have to pay, and I don't like that. I live here in Spalding County as well, and I want to make sure that we are assessing taxes fairly across all of, all of the community. So in Georgia, personal and real property is assessed at 40% of the fair market value, and that's true for us this year with respect to the sales ratio as we just reviewed. A tax rate of one mil represents a tax liability of $1 per $1,000 of assessed value. So a single-family home that has a fair market, just as an example, a single-family home that has a fair market value of $250,000 is assessed $100,000 for their tax valuation. That's 40% of the 240, oh, sorry, of the 250. So 250 divided by 1,000 of assessed value is $250, and $250 multiplied by a millage rate of 15 mils is $1,500. That would be the tax value that we would receive in revenue for maintenance and operation for county taxes. So what, what is the timeline for the millage rate? Well, Georgia law highlights what the timeline should be. July 15th, the Board of Assessors shall complete its revisions and assessment of returns of taxpayers. August, the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education recommend the millage rate, which you did through the, the expenditure budget. The tax commissioners are required in September to submit to the Tax Digest to the Georgia Department of Revenue, and we should have been finished last week, but as I'm sure many of you remember, Helene showed up and we were unable to have our third public hearing, or two weeks ago rather, so we were unable to have our third public hearing. So here we are, October the 7th, setting our millage rate. So just as a highlight, this was the schedule that was presented, and we are in front of you this evening making a recommendation for the millage rate to set October the 7th. So where does Spalding County rank on the Department of Audits with respect to our sales ratio report? We are at 37, we are the 37th, we are in 37th position for the DOAA rating, and the way I received this was the DOAA actually sent out this document for all the counties across the state highlighting where each county was. We are not the highest, we're not the lowest, but we are 37. So our community is growing. If you look at the population across the state, we are the 36th largest community in the state of Georgia. The last report from the U.S. Census Bureau indicates that we are at 70,884, so we have actually surpassed the 70,000 mark for the number of residents who live inside of Spalding We're growing residentially. And what I mean by that is we are still sitting more or less stagnant with respect to the industrial manufacturing and commercial growth that we have across the county. Why is that important? Because as Georgia Tech in their research indicated just two years ago, and the documentation is still very valid, the residential population for our community, it costs us more as a government to satisfy the services for our residential population than it does for, for farms or for our commercial and industrial spaces. In fact, it costs us a dollar and 16 cents for every dollar of revenue generated for taxes to satisfy those services for our residential population, and only 37 cents and 30 cents respectfully for farms and commercial and industrial locations. So what are our expenditure budget requirements for fiscal year '25? In June, we walked through this very painstakingly with our Board of Commissioners and really highlighted how our budget was put together. But as you can see, from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25, we had, we had moved from 67 million to 71 million to satisfy the services that are asked of us from our community. That's a $3.9 million increase. So what millage rate is required to meet those needs? Staff is making a recommendation this evening to maintain the same millage rate as last year, so 15.588. That provides us with one mil equalling 2.769, 273. A mil is not worth a mil, is not worth a mil. So I state that to show you that from 2019 to 2024, one mil has changed. It changed in, from 2019 of 1,617,551 to 2024 at 2,769,273. Why is that? Well, the difference between the expenditure budget and the revenue budget is $823,796. And as you notice, the 2024 millage rate that is being recommended only provides us, well, it's the wrong, please forgive me, that is the absolute wrong millage rate. It should be 15.588, which would be $3.2 million. It gives a, a delta of 8239, 796, which affords us the opportunity to showcase where that money's coming from. The 7.8% increase does not mean that your property taxes will increase that much. What it means is that we have added growth within our community. We've added almost 300 houses within our community just within the last year. Those 300 houses affect the digest, and the digest affects the millage rate because it affects the revenue that comes into our community. So if you boil the tax money down, it indicates that the percentage tax increase is 4.05%. That is the increase for the taxation because of the amount of growth that our community has seen. Last year, we were at 69,800 people in our community, and this year, we're at 70,800. So we've grown 1,000 people, and those 1,000 people had someplace that they needed to live, so those houses were brought into, into play. So what do we need to adopt? Why do we need to adopt a millage rate? Well, our county ordinance indicates that we are to have a balanced budget. In fact, it states it outright that we will have a balanced budget. It also indicates that the board shall not make any appropriations in excess of estimated revenue, except to provide for an actual emergency threatening the health, property, or life, safety, or general welfare of the inhabitants of the county, provided the board unanimously agrees that there is a need therefor. Our emergencies are interesting. Last year, we had a major one. Last year, we had five tornadoes that came through our community and did massive destruction to a good number of homes across our community. Well, if we had not had used the funds from ARPA exactly the way that the federal government indicated that we should, which is $10 million of the 12.9 million that we received, we were able to move that 10 million into our general fund because of lost revenue. There were four reasons why we could use that money: water, sewer, broadband, lost revenue. The federal government changed their rules back in June of last year, where $10 million could be moved into the general fund to accommodate for lost revenue. We took advantage of that, and it was great that we had that money sitting in place because that's what paid for the cleanup for the tornadoes that came through our community. That cleanup was accomplished, our team worked diligently, and I want to give kudos to Chief Glenn Polk for spending countless hours to make sure that the documentation was in place, that we received that, that funding back. At last month's meeting, we showed that there were $17.8 million in our fund balance for our community, and 10 of that was from our ARPA funds, 7.8 of that was from the money that we received back from the federal government. $17.8 million is the equivalent of 100 days of fund balance since that time. And at our next meeting, we will present back to the board an amendment for that budget to accommodate for those items that have been purchased for the county out of fund balance, which includes, I'll use round figures, $900,000 for the radio system that is needing the upgrade, 292, let's call it 300,000 for hand lighter, 200,000 for the renovations of hand lighter, 200,000 for the chiller at the courthouse, and 325,000 for the forensic audit. So those funds will be redacted from our fund balance during the next meeting. We have approximately 15.2 million dollars left in our fund balance. That's the equivalent of roughly 76, 77 days of fund balance. Now then, our county ordinance also provides guidance for adopting a millage rate for our fire district. Our community has not seen five mils. We've not asked our community for the five mils of fund balance, or sorry, of millage rate for our fire district tax. Our code of ordinance indicates that we shall not exceed five mils, but we've not, we've not been there. I want to get back to that, give me just a second, and I'll get back to it. So this is our notice of property tax increase. It is tentatively set at 15.588, an increase of 0.607 mils. So for a home with a fair market value of 225, it's an approximate $53.42 increase annually. For a non-homesteaded property, the average is 175, and that's approximately $44.19 annually. But I do want to hit back up on the fire department for just a second, because they've had a rough year. Let's talk about people, equipment, and facilities. So our rescue units have shut down a part of the shift, 1 to 12 hours, 16 times in the last 12 months. Rescues have shut down a full shift, 94 shifts this past 12 months. Stations have shut down due to staffing 10 days this past year, and the number of overtime personnel called last year to cover a shift to make sure that we did not close a station more than 10 times was 325 shifts of overtime. Our equipment, as you can see, we had a bad year. We had a fire at Gary Reed that damaged the fire station. It also damaged the only ladder truck that we had in service. That ladder truck is due in next December.
Next December?
Next December. The truck on the right-hand side was involved in a motor vehicle accident where our team was working an accident on North Expressway. They had done everything right to mark the vehicle as an emergency vehicle and stationary, and a bucket truck struck the back of that vehicle running approximately 55 miles an hour and split the truck in half. None of our firefighters were injured, but we totally destroyed that fire truck. We have received two of the fire trucks that we have purchased, and we have purchased a total of five. We've received two of them back in service. One was, there's an additional fire truck that has been received since, but, so we've got three brand-new ones, but we're still two short, one being the ladder truck. So it's a great thing that we have memorandum of understanding and state, statewide agreements to take care of our community should we have a need for a ladder truck. So the top right section of the screen shows the millage rate for our fire district tax. We have been very low on our fire district tax, and there's a reason for it. It is not staff's intent to ever charge more or to bank money. It's our intent to satisfy the requirements of our community at the right amount of funding to satisfy the services that we offer as a community. And fire is not a mandated service, but fire is important to all of us, because if we do not have a fire department as well as we have in place right now, our ISO rating is adversely affected, and we pay a significant amount more for our homeowners' insurance. I'm proud of our fire department. I'm proud of the job that they do. I'm proud of the work that they perform, and to be transparent, a 3 and a 3X, which is where our ISO rating out of 10 is, that's excellent for our community, because as of today, we only staff two firefighters per fire station. Our guys run a lot of calls. In fact, they've run 2,302 calls just this year. 39% of those calls have been medical calls. 111 were working fires. 266 were accidents. That's a lot of calls. And it's spread all across the county. I'm sorry?
I want to recall this map in just a minute.
Awesome. So I want to share with you an anticipated tax bill for the average property. So I had a conversation with our So I had a conversation with our tax assessor's office and our tax commissioner and asked them specifically, what is the average price for a homesteaded property in Spalding County? So they did the calculations. The average cost for a homesteaded property is $225,000. If you look at the bill, it indicates that the county MNO, maintenance and operation for, portion of the bill for Spalding County, for a $225,000 home is $1,371.74. For a non-homesteaded property, the average is $175,000. And the MNO taxes on a non-homesteaded, average-priced property is $1,091.16. Tax bills for those who are 65, 70, and 75, there are tax relief options for those who are within our community that are at this age. For 65-years-old, you will notice in the county school MNO, there's an additional $10,000 exemption. For 70-year-olds, there's an additional $20,000 exemption for school taxes. And for 75, there's an additional $30,000 exemption for taxes. And from the top, you can see the differences in the anticipated tax bills. So an example, property tax distribution of revenue for our MNO budget for homesteaded properties. If you look at the $1,371.74 that account for Spalding County MNO tax for an average home, you will notice where those funds are distributed. So for administration, 163, for, and we'll just pick a few, for courts and public safety, it's $720.29, so it makes up for 8% of, I'm sorry, yeah, it makes up for 52% of the tax bill for courts and public safety. And I will allow you to read down the rest. The alignment of revenue and expenditures. So our general MNO fund accounts for 58% of our budget. And if you move that across to our revenues, the majority of our revenue comes from our property taxes. 83% come from our property taxes. How would that be different? It would be different if we had industrial, manufacturing, or commercial. Developing those levels of development make a significant difference for the distribution of tax money within communities. So again, the alignment indicating the general revenue and the expenditure side. What does that feed? What does our general fund feed? It feeds all of our services and some. So our 911, in the "and some," I do want to highlight that for just a second. The "and some," our general fund is required to supplement our 911. So our cellphones and our home phones pay a portion of our 911 fees. But I would ask you to consider something. How many of you have home phones? There was a time when we would have a cellphone and a home phone, and there were some additional funding coming in every single month for those phones. Now, we just have cellphones. But let me ask it in a different way. How many of you are a part of a family plan for your cellphones? And if you are a part of a family plan for your cellphone and that cell number is, let's use Florida as an example, where the bill goes into Florida because your family member lives in Florida, where do those 911 fees go?
Florida.
They go to Florida. That's correct. They do not go to the location where the phone sits 100% of the time. They go to the location where the bill was paid. So there are some discrepancies with respect to the 911 payment system for, not just Georgia, but for across the country. But I say that to say this: we are supplementing the 911 system that we have in our community to the tune of about $1 million a year. So that's a lot of money. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money that we have to generate in order to provide a service for 911. And by the way, 911 is not a mandated service. So it is something that we truly need to offer our community, because I don't know about you, but if I'm in a dire need of help, I want to dial 911 and have a conversation with someone and know that help's coming. So how are our tax dollars broken down? Well, you can see exactly on the screen where our tax money goes. So for every dollar of tax that is generated for our community, 45 cents go to our school system, 42 cents goes to our county MNO, and 13 cents go to our fire department. So we have to turn in what is known as a PT 32.1 every single year for the Department of Revenue. And I just, I brought this to your attention just to highlight the fact that our real property in our community makes up for the vast majority of our tax money. Where our tax money comes from. 85.93% come from real property. We have a desperate need to grow our development for industrial, commercial, and manufacturing. And I know I harp that quite often, but I don't want to stop, because I want my taxes to go down. I live here in the county. At this time, I entertain any questions the board may have.
How much from the general budget goes into the fire department?
None. Absolutely none. The fire department takes care of itself. It's required to take care of itself. It's a tax allocation district that is separated from the City of Griffin, because the City of Griffin operates their own fire department, so we are 100% taken care of by that TAD.
Here's a second question. You showed us on there that the ordinance for the fire district tax, has it capped at five mills? And it's currently at 4.7?
That is the recommendation by staff, is that we move it to 4.7.
Move it to 4.7.
That's correct. That would be 1.25 mills higher than what it currently is. And the reason for it, the staff makes the recommendation that we add one additional firefighter allocated position to each one of our fire trucks in each shift. It's getting dangerous for our guys to respond. And when you have a fire department that, or a fire engine that responds to an active working fire and it's 20 or 25 minutes before their next available resource is rolling on scene, you may have two firefighters that extinguish through one tank of air and have to refuel air and go back in and fight the fire. And by the time the second unit gets there, they're just exhausted. They're limited for the safety that they have on the scene. So when they go into an active burning fire, if there's no one standing outside and the roof cage in, that is a liability that I just do not want on my shoulders.
Any other questions?
How much, how much is one mill, again? 2.76 million?
One mill is 2.7 million for our county MNO. For the fire district tax, it's 2.1, because the City of Griffin is excluded from the fire district tax.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, County Manager.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that wonderful presentation. As soon as he gets back, we'll ask. Dr. Ledbetter, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
I have to change glasses.
Yes.
Yes, sir, we have about 11 people who have signed up.
Michelle Druaz, 312 Whispering Pines Way, Griffin, Georgia. Good evening, Commissioners. I ask if the Board is paying attention to the five-year history of tax increases levied on the backs of the homeowners in this county. In 2019, it was 8.41%, 2020, 1.65%, 2021, 7.7%, 2022, a whopping 17.15%, and 2023, 9.71%. That is a 44.62% tax increase in just five years. And now you are asking for an increase of 4.05% more. Even with last year's millage rate rollback to 15.588 mills, the homeowner still had a 9.71% tax increase. The County Manager and the Board had been warning of a millage rate increase to 18 mills, so I guess we are supposed to be happy with keeping the millage rate the same, even though it still results in a tax increase. It is unrealistic for this Board to continue to raise our taxes and spend as if there is no accounting for the taxpayers' hard-earned dollars. In fact, this Board recently approved the purchase of a Handlighter Baptist Church and property for $292,000. And then this Board approved $300,000 in renovations for the church building. You haven't even explained to your constituents what this building was purchased for and why this purchase was done with taxpayer hard-earned dollars. You have not explained why the taxpayers are having to pay to renovate this building. Why does the county need a church which is located in the City of Griffin? For a county with no money, and this Board constantly reminds us how this purchase, how this county has no money, how is this purchase even possible and why? There's something really wrong with this picture and your approval of almost $600,000 in taxpayer hard-earned dollars for this purchase. And this Board also approved $355,000 for Public Works Department for an easement crew and machinery, supposedly from the supplemental budget of over $2.9 million. I looked for this request on the supplemental budget wish list, and an easement crew was not on the list. The supplemental budget is set aside for the 91 unfilled positions which were available in Spalding County. So why did this over $2.9 million result in a wish list and not savings for the taxpayers? This Board is spending indiscriminately and not taking the local economy or the burden on the resident taxpayers into consideration. This has to stop. Do you realize that residents are being forced to move out of Spalding County because they cannot afford to pay their taxes? You are forcing people out of their homes, or they have to make a choice on paying their taxes or providing for their basic needs. It is time for the millage rate rollback with a zero tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
Tim Poole.
My name's Tim Poole. I live at 1108 Sage Drive, Griffin, Georgia. Most of the time, these rooms fill up for pushback and not ever say thank you. So thank you all for what you do for the county and to Commissioners and Dr. Ledbetter. I've been watching the live streams, trying to keep up with what's going around the county, and that's made it really good for, you know, busy lifestyle. I streamed the budget meeting and at the end, kind of got the gist that it was going to pass without a millage rate increase, which I think is great. But, you know, we see things tonight where there's still going to be a net millage rate change to the taxpayer with the fire stuff. So, you know, kind of a little bit surprised with that. I mean, I appreciate everything that we have with our fire department, but, you know, at the end of the day, each year, we don't, citizens get to dictate our pay increases. So we kind of get what we get despite our performance, so we just do the best we can within our budget. So I think, you know, we've got to find a way going forward, especially with House Bill 581. If that passes, that's going to, you know, really change things with the assessment side. So we may have to really look at next year's budget a lot harder than this one. So I think that's just about all I've got to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ricky Taylor, 1616 Bell Drive, District 3. I want to say first, Dr. Ledbetter, thank you for your presentation you did a while ago, understood it perfectly. And also the one you did on the 16th, perfect, I understood everything right down the line. And when I understand it, that means something to me. Thank you. All right. But here's what I want to say. I understand what's being done. I've looked at this budget time and time and time again online and went through it. And I understand we need probably a little bit more to take care of our sheriff department and all this. But I see the biggest problem we have in Spalding County with our taxes is going to the school board. And I know, and if I go over and show up at the school board, I can say nothing, zero. They won't let me say a word. So I'm calling on you to approach the school board to see if they can operate for a little bit less, because here's what we got. We're in the top 10 of people dropping out of school in the state of Georgia, and we're at the bottom of the grade scores in Georgia. And so we're not getting our money's worth. That's what I'm saying. With the school board taxes we're paying, we're not getting our money's worth. If I run a business like the school board's running the schools, I'd be sued just like that right there. But what can we do as a taxpayer? Keep paying the same thing and getting the same thing, nothing. And I want you, as the Commissioner Board, to approach them and see if we can get that done for less money, because it's not the amount of money. The money has nothing to do with it. It's something to do with the quality of what they're producing. It's producing a lower student support. All right. Cady County, their tax rate, their millage rate is 23. They're a full-time the population of us, and they're doing it for 23 mills. Butts County is half of what we are, and they're doing it for 25 mills. I think we can do it less, and because that's the whole thing, that's the county and the schools in both places. We're paying too much for school tax. That's the biggest problem with the taxpayers in Spalding County. And when Dr. Ledbetter was talking about the 15 mills that the county was operating off of, I was choking on 40, because that's what I was getting on my tax bill. And it's all to do with the school, and y'all help us out with that.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Julia Maloney, 916 Hamilton Boulevard. I'm probably the unpopular opinion, because I'm here to ask that we increase the millage rate. I support that. I work for the Spalding County Animal Control. Absolutely love my job, the opportunity to help our abandoned, abused, mistreated animals. We are already on a tight budget, and I come from a long line of government employees that have been through budget cuts and cut back on millage rates and tax cuts, and it really, it hurts our public departments. It hurts our public services that they can't function properly. We take in a high volume of animals, strays off the streets, unwanted, abused animals. We properly care for them. We have increased our adoption rates. Our adoption rates are soaring. Now that we're open on Saturdays, we're getting tons of adoptions. There's no greater joy than to see an animal that's come from a horrible situation, that we nurse back to health at our shelter, and they leave our shelter for a good home, for a second chance. We're doing spays and neuters. We're vaccinating. We're setting a good example for the rest of the community that, you know, this is spaying, neuter, taking care of your animals. And we have a high demand. We don't have a lot of rescues here. We don't have any rescues here. The county shelter is all that the people have to depend on. So I am a homeowner as well. I don't like taxes either, but I understand the reality that tax increases are necessary to fund government programs. And there have been talks of having a kill shelter. Kill shelters don't work. We had them for decades. If they worked, our neighbors that have kill shelters wouldn't have to kill animals every three to 10 days. You know, I just don't think that's the solution. And I also asked the Board to consider the human cost of running a kill shelter. Yeah, maybe it might save us a buck or two here or there, although euthanizations are not cheap. However, there is a human cost. Nobody wants to get up to work every day and have to euthanize animals every three to 10 days. So I'm in support of increasing the millage rate so that our government services can function properly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. Cynthia Owens at 233 Robert Street. As we all know, the Spalding County's manager is responsible for leading an organization of approximately 550 employees and a budget of a fiscal year for 2024, '25 of over $123 million. million. How many of these employees are here opposing their manager's recommendation that will result in higher tax? Well, these employees have received an increase in salary. Call it a pay plan to alleviate pay compression, but it's still an increase while the high percentage of your citizens have not received any increases and are struggling maintaining the American dream of owning a home and providing for their family. And this includes renters, as the landlord will pass along the increase. Please remember that this time last year, the manager proposed to raise the millage rate from 16.138 to 18.826. And in '23, with the property valuations increasing from 11 to over 25 percent, this would have resulted in a tax increase of 32.49 percent. After hearing from the citizens, the Board of Commissioners responded by a 3 to 2 vote, rolling back the millage rate from 16.138 to 15.588. However, with this rollback, it still resulted in the tax increase of 9.17, excuse me, 9.71. Let me remind each of you, it was reported, and I will quote, "The Spalding County Board of Commissioners approved the balanced budget of $71,168,562 for the fiscal year of 2024 and 2025 at the meeting of June 20 of 2024. This budget is an increase from the current budget, but the Commissioners hope to keep the same millage rate. This is because an estimated increase of 3.7 million in property value should cover the difference." This is end quote. In this statement, they admit that there was enough to cover the increase in the budget, but here we are again with our hands held out wanting more from the citizens. What most disturbing to me is that the Spalding County taxes have increased 34.56 percent in the last three years, and now the Board of Commissioners are proposing to keep the same millage rate at 15.588, which sounds great. Well, no, it's really not great. It will result in a tax increase of 4.05. As some of you may ask, how is this tax increase possible with the millage rate staying the same? And I'll let my cousin explain that.
Bruce Ledbetter.
Bruce Ledbetter, 240 Robert Street. Some may ask, how is a tax increase possible when the millage rate is staying the same? It's because, let me explain. It is because our property valuations have increased anywhere from 9 to over 25 percent in 2024. And if this passes today, there will be a tax increase of 4.05 percent, as just stated by the county manager. Could this be the main reason the state of Georgia recommends a rollback of the millage rate to offset the exponential increase of property valuations? The House Bill HB 581 will be on the November 5 ballot as a referendum to hold the county to property valuations that match the rate of inflation, Consumer Price Index of around 3 percent. Is the Spalding County manager and commissioners trying to get as much possible on the backs of their citizens prior to the possibility the House Bill passes, 581 passes? I hope not. Let's hope that the minds of the Board of Commissioners are open and not pre-made up of passing this increase, as reported in the adjournment in the Board of Education meeting on Tuesday, September 17. One of the commissioners during the adjournment, it appeared as the Board of Education Commissioners' minds were already made up prior to the final meeting. You may be asking yourself, why would I make this assumption? Well, during the adjournment of the Board of Education, Commissioner stated, and I quote, "We have one more millage rate hearing where we will pass the millage rate." Preferably, this is not a mindset of the Board of Commissioners. And I hope you're listening to us, because we're down and out. Anyway, the result of the vote of this will determine the citizens of Spalding County, believe the Board of Manager are being mindful of the economy and whether or not they're being good stewards of taxpayers' money. And I love animals for BFF. I've got several. But people come first.
Thank you, sir.
Christine Thomas.
Christine Thomas, 400 North River Road, Williamson, Georgia. I just want to say that in 2001, taxes levied 9.7 million. In 2024, taxes levied for this is 43 million. The assessed value was 1.4 billion in 2003, and in 2024, it's 3.1 billion. You claim it's $50. And like you said, you have to know that even with the millage rate, it says rollback, that's just, that's speak, because it doesn't. It even, it states, and I can't, I didn't have it here. So in 2017, the increase, from 2017 to 2024, it was a 69 percent increase over the next taxes. And then on, in, let's see, I can't remember, 2017, the average market value is 141, and then in 2024, it was 274. So there's a big difference. So you say that you're not going to get any more, but because our property valuations went up. Another thing that people are not talking about is the splosh. You guys have like 58, 50, I don't know, like 58, $588 million in splosh since 1997. Those were meant to, that includes transportation, education, and just any kind of special purpose local optional sales tax. Those were supposed to be made to offset any of the property taxes. But, but you're not. So since, from 2001 to, or excuse me, 2017 to 2024, it's a 69 percent increase. I mean, where is, where is, and then from, like I said, 2001 was 9.7, and now it's 43 million. But then you have 587 or around there, million dollars in splosh. Where's the offset? By law, you have to offset it. When are you going to listen to the people? We voted for you. We put you in the office, and we can take you out as far as, we can not vote for you because there's people that vote out the incumbents. And then there's also, when we can, I can't remember the word that I'm looking for, but recall you. We can recall you, and I think that people need to start doing that, because you don't, it seems like you don't fear us at all. You just fear that you're not going to get our money. And I'm just thinking, what can we do as citizens to get your attention? What can we do? Because last time, you did it, I mean, I was up here in 2020, whatever it was, right before the storm came, and I said this prayer, "Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For yours is the kingdom, and power, and glory forever and ever. Amen." And I said that, and then the next meeting, you guys said it again, and you blasphemed God.
Vicki Hennessy.
1632 Ashantilly Drive. I'm actually coming here as the new animal shelter director. I just kind of want to talk to you about considering the millage rate tax increase. Without that, a lot of the services that come through the animal shelter would not be possible. We solve with a firm determination to do something, passionate, intense devotion to our calls. Every adoption is a victory, 378 that we've had so far in the last four months, particularly for pets once deemed unadoptable, thrown away, or euthanized. We are daily intaking strays, 512 to be exact, in the last four months. And deemed aggressive animals are getting off the street to help curtail the pet overpopulation epidemic in Spalding County. There are better stats than any year since 2019. So far, total stray intakes were 517 that we've taken in in the four months that I've been here, and over 800 for the year. Strays are being picked up. All animals adopted are altered, vaccinated, microchipped. Our shelter offers a haven for the broken, mistreated, and abused. We provide veterinarian care and unconditional love. We gently work with the pets that have known, never known, human kindness. Our guiding principles are clear: We shelter, protect, prevent, and provide refuge until they are rehomed. Each animal receives extra care and love. We run a foster program for medical pets, nursing moms, motherless kittens and puppies. Daily, we cultivate relationships with vetting partners. We have a RTO program, which is Return to Owner, which reunites pets with owners, ensuring that they receive microchips and spay and neutering before they leave the shelter. Community outreach emphasizes humane treatment and the eradication of chaining and the importance of spay and neuter amongst all the pets. No longer pets are not taught to have rights, animals must be cared for properly in and out of the shelter. In difficult decisions, we provide end-of-life euthanasia for the deemed medically unsavable or the highly unadopted, and we do that compassionately. ACO is an emotional journey, is driven by an unwavering commitment to animal welfare. Together, we care, show up, and make a profound difference. Our doors are open weekdays, every Saturday, and now we have ACO staff that is available 24/7 for emergencies. An ACO may show up at your house on a Saturday or Sunday, so now there's no waiting until Monday in case there's a situation, or a stray, or an aggressive dog. We appreciate the support of the community as we strive to keep our shelter a no-kill, and thank you once again for all the help and support that you've given over the last 16 years as a volunteer and now as an employee. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm struggling to read the names, so please forgive me if I mess it up. Mark Kendall or Kirkland?
Kirkland.
Thank you.
I was signing Michael. I should have never made the need.
Thank you.
My handwriting probably hasn't improved since third grade. I was rushed to learn cursive when I moved down from Jonesboro, so there it is. Anyway, my name is Mark Kirkland. I live at 463 Noonan Road here in Griffin. Been here most of my life since third grade, which I just said. But I do have some questions. I was here last year, too, and talking about the millage rate. And I think it is a wrong way back to the rollback. We're tired. We're burdened heavy. I'm looking at, like I just said, you've heard the increases on the taxes, the money amounts. It's unbearable. I've got a 2010 car, a 2001 truck, and I inherited another car, bought it back, working on it, trying to keep them all going. I can't afford to buy a new car. And all of a sudden, I can't afford to pay my taxes. And that's where we at. I keep looking at all these new things that's offered. Now, I appreciate all the work that the animals do. I appreciate it. I personally, in our household, I've got two stray dogs that popped up in the last four or five years. I kept both of them. They're great dogs. So I've got real good compassion. But at the same time, we're not talking about that. We're talking about taxes. We're trying to find a way to save money. Now, we all got budgets. I can want a lot of things. I can feel I may deem a lot of things, and sometimes that gets into wanting. But bottom line, you know, we're making more money because the valuations went really up, as y'all just heard, in the last five years. Mine went from $2,800 to four grand. It was 42. I got to save $200 last year. I filled it twice last year, and it dropped to $200, but I appreciate it, but it's still four grand any way you want to slice it. It's hard to come by just to live in Spalding County. Now, you know, I don't got to stay here, but I like it here. But I think something's got to give. I mean, we can't, you know, we can't just, where's it going to end at? How much money are we going to need? You're already making more because of evaluations. I mean, nobody is talking about that. Tonight was the first time I really, really heard that. The county's always making more money because the valuation is really steep. So if you got that surplus already, and from my understanding, I think we already got a surplus built back since the tornado, which was a couple of years ago, actually. So, you know, we got to stop it. We got to make a dent in it. Don't even keep it the same. Roll it back to what somebody said a while ago. They know the valuations are high. They gave us this tool for the counties to work with it. Use this tool and drop it back for you citizens. Find a way to cut your money somewhere. I know my budget, I can, I go out to eat less, I do something less, I don't buy a new car less, whatever the case may be. Find a way to do what you need to do and still hold your county together, make it a good county, like it always has been, but at the same time, stop the bleeding. We're hurting.
Thank you, sir.
Charles Dodson.
Jeff Grant, 225 Morris Street, Griffin. Sent all y'all letters. Hope you read it. But, you know, I want to reiterate some things. The amount of money you received on the high assessments, I mean, that should have been enough to carry you. Now here, we are talking about wanting to raise millage rates. It just seems like the more you get, the more you always want. More is never enough, and it's time to make changes. It's time to start watching budgets. It's time to cut budgets. I lost track where I was going. The budget's out of control, departmental budgets. I work for the school system, what Mr. Taylor says. I agree wholeheartedly. They waste a lot of money. I worked for them. I knew how some of the budgets went. I know that's a school board issue, but they do need, something needs to happen, because it's just not right to be taxed that high on school taxes. And in those high budgets, I mean, in those high assessments, only a small percentage of people even appealed. What was it, 8% or something like that? Some people just have the, you know, thought, well, it don't matter, they're going to do what they're going to do, and all that, so they took it and went on. But the problem is, I'm a realtor, so I look at property values all the time. That's my job. I see a lot, I think it's a big disconnect between the assessors and you. There's a lot of property in this county, a lot of assault increases, huge increases, but there's a lot of property in this county that is undervalued. A lot of it is overvalued, but there's a whole lot that's undervalued, especially looking at a lot of these big landlords that owns hundreds of houses. You know, you can't find a $30,000, $40,000 house in Spalding County anymore, but some of them do. The houses are assessed less than what they paid for the house five, six years ago. I've looked at it, I know. And parks, we got parks, I mean, hundreds and hundreds of acres in Spalding County are parks that was money took out of digest, and then it falls back on taxpayers. We got to maintain those parks. Now, a lot of those parks, I don't even see people using them. The Doggy Park, you know, I go by there pretty regular. Normally, I don't see one, two cars there. The Rock Prairie Park over there, I live in, or used to live in that neighborhood, parents still do. I go by there, nobody's ever using it, but the county maintains it. I go by there, there's people hanging out, you know, that's another story, but a lot of thugs hanging out there. So a lot of people may be even scared to use it. And I guarantee you, if we had the industrial commercial business as you speak of, we'd still be right here every year after year talking about our taxes being too high. Griffin's been inviting industry since I can remember. The big town, uptown, I always say Griffin invites industry. Been there for 30 years when I was in high school, and taxes have always been an issue here, always been too high. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if anyone else who signed up this evening?
I'd like to first thank you, everybody that came to speak tonight and voiced their opinion to the commissioners. At this time, do I have a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second? Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. Motion carries. We're out of closed hearing. Item number five, millage rate. Consideration to set the calendar year 2024 millage rate. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to set the millage rate for Spalding County M&amp;O.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to take staff's recommendation and to allow the millage rate to remain at 5.588.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't.
So is this done in two parts? We're setting the entire thing? This includes the fire district tax, right?
That is correct.
If we don't give the fire district tax an increase, do we expect the same If we don't give the fire district tax an increase, do we expect the same? You had a slide for that. Can we go to that slide? How many times they were closed? How many times fire stations were closed?
Keep coming.
That's it.
No. One more.
It's a chart. It's some kind of chart that you said you wanted to come back to.
Stations shut down due to staffing 10 days. Shut down for a shift, that means 24 hours, 94 shifts.
So the rescues were shut down for a 24-hour period 94 times, but a full station was shut down 10 full days this, this past 12 months, and we called 325 people in to ensure that we did not close stations, additional station days.
Has the amount of overtime that we've had to call in gone down since the salary adjustments? Like, did we, did we hire what we needed to hire?
We hired.
You know what I'm saying? I would assume we had more of that before the adjustment.
So we, we had, we are almost halfway through a new class of new hires. We hired 14. We may graduate six. So we are still having to fund the overtime for the stations because we are, at least 14, I think we're 18 short. Yeah, we're 18 short today.
Have any of our inmate firefighters graduated and come back to the real world?
No, sir. They are still serving as an inmate firefighter.
Can I ask, not joking, a question later in there? So can you actually break down as far as services are concerned, or what happens if we do not adopt the current millage rate? What does this mean for the county overall? What, what does this mean if we choose not to do this?
So, as I indicated earlier with respect to the county ordinance, the expenditure budget was adopted in June, and the expenditure budget was designed specifically for meeting the bare essential services for the community, and the ordinance requires that our expenditure budget and our revenue budget matches. The 15.588 for our county M and O is the balanced budget for the expenditures, for the services that, that we are presenting. If the board makes the decision to rollback or lower the millage rate, a decision would need to be made with respect to what services should be cut. Our ordinance does not afford us the opportunity to use fund balance to balance the budget. Have we done it in the past? Yes. Should we have? No. The ordinance requires that we have an expenditure budget equal to the revenue budget. So we would have to decide which services would be cut from, from offering to the community.
Go ahead.
I want, I wanted to ask about the emergency calls. We had somebody in here about a month ago that was getting, you know, given an award to firefighter because someone had a heart attack on site, and they were the first responders. And I don't think that a lot of people know that on a daily basis, Wellstar Spalding may not have more than two ambulances working. So that means that if there's a first responder call, it's generally our firefighters who show up to do that. Now, I have a particular issue with them because since they came here, they've not paid any property taxes, which initially was almost a million dollars that we lost in tax revenue. But over the last three years, they have purchased several doctor's offices of doctors who've been here 20 and 30 years practicing, and those practices no longer provide taxes to us as well. So it's not so much that we're just spending money. There's less money coming in because of things that are really out of our control. I am furtive that if I call 911, I want someone to show up. If it is going to be the duty of our firefighters to work as EMS, then we're not obligated to do that, just like we're not obligated to provide fire service, and that's why it costs. But it's, it'll be too late when nobody shows up, and your, your family member is either passed out or had a heart attack or stroke or whatever, because there is no guarantee that you will get an ambulance from Wellstar on any given time. So I think it's very important that we, that we stock our firehouses. The city, the mayor from Orchard Hill came in and was concerned about the fact that on, on multiple occasions when people called Wellstar, it, it was almost, they had to drive themselves to the, to emergency room.
Yeah, they're having like 27-minute response time.
Right. So, so we're doing a lot with the little we have, but we need those extra people. And the paramedics, we need them because if someone does need to start an IV, or somebody does need to put somebody on a defibrillator, or give them medications, it's usually not the EMS or the firefighter. So paramedics are needed on each one of these shifts to make sure if there is a medical emergency that they're able to respond appropriately. I just don't see how we cannot do what we need to do to make sure that the fire department and EMS services are running. This time next year, we may actually be DM EMS services, and so we have to really look at that because we don't have any arrangement with Wellstar, and if they just stop doing it, we can let the community go without ambulance service, or as a county, we'll have to take that responsibility on even more than we're doing now. So that's, that's why I made my motion.
Well, and I was going to kind of piggyback on some of the services that you were talking about, in particular, and I hate to bring it up, but I'm going to. Every year after year, we, we talk about the recycling centers, and we talk about really working to keep this open because we understand how important it is to the citizens. How much longer we are able to do that is going to be up to the, to the board, to the future board. But we've been fighting to do this every year because we realize how much it costs to keep that service open as well, over a million dollars. I, like most people, would like to see that open, continue to stay open, and I hate to see that threatened because we don't continue to do, to keep this millage rate as it is. And that's another conversation that may be dealt with, you know, if, if the rollback is, is taken. So these are, these are services that we need to talk about, that will affect you.
In the, the motion that's on the floor, there is no increase for fire or these emergency services. What, what do we anticipate with that lack of increase there, keeping it the same? What would, do we anticipate having the same number of shifts closed and the same number of stations shut down?
Adamantum, yes, sir.
How many current positions are budgeted but unfilled? I know we had a bunch, not, not just in the fire, like in, in general. We had a bunch last year that we ended up never, never filling.
Counting the fire department, because I don't have them separated today. We've had one of our, our individuals who helped us keep that record, she's been out sick. It appears to be 62 that are currently still open, but open with applications filled. So we could be down as low as 50 this week, which is great because we are seeing applications coming in far more this year than we did last year.
That's countywide. 50 positions that haven't been filled, that we budgeted for.
Correct.
That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Is, in an attempt to try to get more funding over to the fire department, is there a way to change the budget by that 50, just kind of going on an average? That's around a million and a half dollars. If, is there a way to move that from general and into the fire department?
No, sir.
No, I'm, I'm talking about via millage rate swaps?
Not and keep the same level of service that you have for the county M and O.
What, what did you just say?
So we have, we have currently 50 unfilled positions that no one's currently going for.
Well, you've got 50, but only two and a half months into the calendar year, so if any of them are filled between now and the end of the year, then that's correct.
Yep, absolutely. I'm, I'm hearing you, and I don't think that we should stop hiring, but right now, our, where our budget's one and a half million for jobs that we hope to fill.
Jobs that we desperately need to fill. And I'll give you some examples. Public Works is down five people, three are on per count. They desperately need to be filled because there are services that we are not providing to our community that desperately need to be filled.
Okay. Any more discussion on the motion to keep it at 15, 588? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Two. All those opposed, same sign. Three. Motion does not carry. I make a motion to, to go to the rollback rate of 14, 981 and to not increase the millage rate for fire. Do I have a second?
I, I will second that, just for the purpose of discussion, because the amount of funding that I'm, I'm thinking that we're talking here is several million dollars.
Steve, explain, let Steve explain that.
And, 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 and my other question is, what is your rationale and where will those cuts happen? Because last year, you guys made cuts and threw the ball at Steve and told him to figure it out, which is not how it's supposed to work. We did the budget from January to now. Steve only facilitated us doing it. Now, all of a sudden, last year, he had to figure out where the loss is going to be. So I seconded your motion for the purpose of you explaining to us where that three or four million dollars is going to be made up, because you're suggesting that we roll this back.
Hold on. First, let's quantify what we're talking about. That's a, that's a .6 mil rollback, right?
Correct. 1.68 million dollars.
1.68 million. Okay. So we're talking about 1.68 million dollars. What, how are we balancing the budget? That's, that's the question. So you've got a motion and a second, but if it, if that vote passes, we must tonight cut from our budget, 1.68 million dollars. And we can't just say, do it. That is a policy-level decision. This isn't $50,000 we're talking, and, and he can kind of balance that over the course of a year. 1, 1.68 million dollars, that's a, that's, that's a us five decision. So I know that all five of us have looked at the budget and said, we need to cut here, we need to cut here, and we've been doing that since I was elected, and we've cut and cut and cut. I get the accounting practices, again, not as well as my CPA wife, as far as you have to budget for things that aren't fulfilled, and, you know, then at the end of the year, we have some extra. But like, so maybe we do that in reverse, and we preemptively cut those and then add them back as people are filling them, you know, maybe there's a way to do that, but what's the, we, we can't just snap the ball with, you know, 1.68 left in the air. We, we have to make that decision here. So that's, you know, it's your motion. What are we cutting?
So, because I, yeah. Am I understanding, you said that the change in the millage based on the chairman's suggestion is 1.68 mils?
1.68 million dollars just for county M and O.
No, it's a 6.6 mils.
Yeah, it's a .607.
Yep.
That is the rollback?
Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
And that is equal to how much?
$1,680,000.
So the ball's in his court. Ball's in your court, chairman.
I mean, again, we're all, we love to cut it, but...
My whole fear, I'm, I'm, if she hadn't have seconded, I would have seconded. But my only fear is like, look what Asheville's going through right now. You got FEMA, the federal government sitting there, not helping them out a bit, and it's the local municipalities that happen to help. It's just like this past little storm here. I know y'all didn't see that much damage, but it cost the county $150,000. We don't get no help. We don't get reimbursed because it didn't fall under the guidelines of, of...
Disaster.
The disaster, the, the certain guidelines of the disaster that they set. Just, just say like when the tornadoes come through, that would have been $12 million gone, that we didn't have to support it. I'm all for dropping, lowering taxes to a point, but we got to be sensible about it right now because if y'all haven't noticed, the weather, the times are kind of dangerous right now. So, I mean, when, when shit hits the fan, we're going to have to take care of ourselves.
Yeah.
And, you know, and like you said, I'm 100% for reducing taxes, but we can't go too far. I mean, because the services y'all ask for or claim we don't give on Facebook and all the time, they're there, and if we start cutting something, y'all really going to notice the service is being cut.
You give a million dollars for the sheriff, for the, for the school board cameras.
Order, point of order, Mr. Chairman.
This is not an opportunity. I've had that opportunity.
So I got my discussion. I was saying my second. If you want to second, you can do that.
Are you seconding?
No.
Okay. Motion does not have a second, so that motion does not carry. Is there a motion on what the, we've, we've done 15, 588, and that did not carry? We did the 14, the rollback did not go. Somebody got an in-between position?
I, I, I have one, but I'd like to ask some questions first. I, I mean, just to follow up on what we were just talking about, these unfunded positions, or the funded positions that are unfilled, is, is there a way to add those back as the year goes on? Are you, you following what I'm saying?
I do.
And reamend or whatever we need to do so that we can, we can move as much of that currently budgeted, but currently going unspent money over to the fire department so that we can stop shutting down fire departments?
We can't do that.
Why can't I lower one millage rate and raise the other? Why can't I do that?
It's, the fire department is not an OCGA requirement for us. We're providing a service. That is why there's a special fire tax.
So we can't lower one millage rate and raise the other?
And they're capped at five.
If, if you're going to utilize general fund monies to pay for the fire department, you're going to open up service delivery.
I'm not.
But you will. You're going to use those funds in order to satisfy a requirement until the end of the year so that you can do a budget amendment.
I'm, I'm misspeaking then. Let me be more clear. I'd like, you're saying it's around a million and a half budgeted towards positions that are currently unfilled. I'd like, I'm, and here's my spitball, is lowering our general M and O millage rate and putting that same amount towards the fire rate so that via the millage rates, we're moving one from the general into the fire rate.
I do get that.
And I can do that, right? Like, I can motion to do that. This isn't against the law, like I can lower one millage rate and raise the other, right? I mean, I can make a motion to do that.
You, you, you can, but we're going to instantly reduce the number of allocated positions for the county M and O by the equivalent.
Because it has to be a balance.
It has to be a balance.
Yes, and that's, that's exactly what I'm talking about. So, but there is a way to do that.
You, you could do that.
And the fire district tax is, can be set by resolution. It can go no higher than five mils.
That's correct.
Right. What's it currently set at?
It's 4.72 would be 1.25 mil increase for the target, fire district tax. So you would be able to do that, but we would lose all the allocated positions. So anything that's allocated at the sheriff's department or at the CI or at any one of our other locations would need to be redacted until you move the millage rate back to accommodate for that, because there would not be enough funding to satisfy the requirement.
Did the sheriff not already do that unilaterally in his own budget last year?
Last year, he did move his pay up, and we were able to satisfy that requirement at the end of the year through a budget amendment, but we didn't change the millage rate to offset the, the revenue for that change. We made the changes that were required for funding each one of the positions this year for the pay increase that Evergreen Consulting did for us.
While we're here, let me make a couple of comments. One transparency comment. Last year, so everybody is aware, the governor gave us a homeowner's tax...
Last year, so everybody is aware, the governor gave us a homeowner's tax relief grant. It was on our tax bill. It was about $500 per homeowner. He did not do it this year, so no matter what happens, you're going to have a five... Homeowners are going to have about a $500 increase in taxes if everything stays exactly the same. Secondly, you should be very proud, in my opinion, of your board. The diversity of thought between the five of us is very important to every... Should be important to every one of our citizens. You see that all of us come from different sides. Instead of all of us being exactly the same and saying the same thing, we all talk about it from a different perspective. The diversity of thought is important, and I truly appreciate that. It is hard sometimes to work with, but I appreciate that opportunity. As you can tell, I believe strongly that the citizens have been... We've gone to the citizens enough, and that we should try to reduce the pressure we're putting on the citizens. That's not the movement of the board, you can see, and I understand that. I'd like to take a few minutes just to kind of talk about how we got to where we are. Last year, last January, right after we were coming out, we decided that we would put the millage rate at 15,588. We were looking at what we thought was going to be a tax digest of 17, 18, 19, if you all remember, mils. And we thought, I thought, let me just be specific, I thought 15,588 was going to be a reduction in the millage rate from where it would come in because of the, what we thought was going to be the tax digest to be able to do that. We asked the great county manager to put money into the general fund. Our goal was to get to 90 days. You heard in brief today that we're over 100 days into the general fund. That's a big deal to us. That's an issue for us being able to do something in case. It's the most money I think I have ever seen our fund balance have because of the tornadoes and what we learned from having to do that with the tornadoes. As we got farther into the year, and we approved the budget at 15,588, and then later on, months later, we found out that the general, the tax digest was going to be at 7% or 8%. That changed everything in my mind of what we're trying to get done. This is an issue of services versus money. I've been averaging four calls per day on doing the millage rate. This is almost, just like you heard tonight, I think there were 10 briefers, two of them were for increasing, and eight for decreasing the millage rate. You can't have more services and less millage rate. That just doesn't work that way. It's got to be a balanced scale, as you've heard the county manager talk to us about. So, if we wanted to do something, what you're hearing us talk about now is, what aren't we going to do? The county manager came up with a budget, showed it to us, and the first time we've ever seen it done the way he did it, to be able to say, "There's nothing in here, we think, that isn't a need." There are some needs, almost needs, in a supplemental that he put together and said, "It's a pay-as-you-go to be able to do that." The example I use in my mind is, let's say that he says, "We're going to spend $1,500 on gas this month, and we only spend $1,200, and we have money left over." When he has enough of that money left over, we go to the supplemental, and then he can offer, take one of those things off the supplemental and say, "I'm willing to pay for it." It is a great way of doing it, and where I used to come from, it was called unfinanced requirements, and we tried to do that. So, he's cut the budget down, the staff has cut the budget down to the lowest number as they know how to do, anything less than this. Now, you need to be aware that there are a lot of services that are not mandated, that we, the board, believe you tell us to do. You've got to understand, there are millions of dollars in there that we say, "All right, we want to do that." That's a big issue for us. That's a decision we make from talking to you all to be able to say, "Do you want to do 911? Do you want to do all the stuff in the sheriff's department? Do you want to do all the stuff in the animal shelter? Do you want to do all the stuff?" And we go on and on and on to be able to do that. So, there's different things that, over the period of time, citizens have come forth and say, "We're willing to do this." And in fact, we have been funding those items. So, I want to make sure everybody understands how we got to where we are with 15,588 in the budget. It's what we agreed to, what we told the county manager to be able to get to. He got a budget there. He got them more than 90 days in our general fund, which is exactly what we said to him he wanted us to do. So, pat on the back to the county manager for doing that.
And I have a question also asked you about hiring and staffing and services. Are we fully, are we fully up to date, shall I say, with the department, with code enforcement? Do we have everyone that we need to do the job in this county?
We have two and a half code enforcement officers. We are slated for three. The half person is scheduled to go to police officer standard training right after the first of the year, so we will have...
So, a lot of my calls, the point I make is, a lot of the calls that I get from constituents, is it comes from that area. So, I want to make sure that whatever decision that's made tonight, that department, long leisure services, public works, meaning, could be affected by that. So, that's the thing that I kind of concern. I mean, it's one thing to do this because you think, "This is going to help me right now," and I get it. But when these some things are needed, that's the worst thing as a commissioner to do, is to say, "Hey, you know, we can't do it because of this, because we don't have the people to do it." And then, there goes the community, basically, because we worked hard to get ourselves staffed up. I know you have, since last year, you know? So, just kind of know what we're working with here if anything changes.
Yes, ma'am, and I do want to go back and reiterate one thing. The sheriff did make an adjustment for salaries last year based on the number of deputies that he was short. But the difference between what he provided for his deputies was less than what Evergreen indicated was the salary. Also, the sheriff's department, they were losing people far greater than even the fire department, and the fire department was losing people significantly, simply because of the salaries that our community was offering in comparison to those jurisdictions just adjacent to us. I'm proud of our sheriff. He's done a great job. And they, the sheriff's department, they are working to staff at the level that we have allocated them. Do they need more people? Oh, without question. They need to add at least one or two more deputies per shift to cover the amount of increase that we have seen within our community. Remember, we've grown 1,000 people just in the last year. So, that brings with it more houses that they need to ride by just to check on. More alarm systems are going off. Our fire department's in the same position. They are responding to far more calls this year than they were last year. The cuts with respect to the positions would come from our first responders, because that's where the majority of the open positions are. There are six open positions in NAMO-1. The majority of the open positions, as they stand today, several are from public works, but the majority are from the fire department and sheriff's department. So, reallocating positions is... I struggle with that one, because we desperately need to make sure that we're providing the service that we have always provided for our community with respect to safety and welfare.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, so, I have been here at times when, on a regular basis, we had to use fund balance to balance our budget. I'm not totally in agreement with that, but as a board, we said that we would like to have 90 days worth of fund balance. Some of the comments that people made today, I mean, I'm kind of in that same spot. If the assessments are up, then of course, the revenues will be up, and the best evidence of that we will see on the other side, in July or August or whenever it is that we do it. But as a board, we can also say that, because I think you said we had 100 days of fund balance. As a board, we can make a decision to...
Ms. Quinn, I don't mean to interrupt you. We did have 100 days of fund balance at 17.8 million. With the expenditures that the board has made in the last 90 days, we are a little bit... We're a little bit less than 15.8 million, so we have about 76 days worth of fund balance.
Say that again, how many days?
About 76.
So, I mean, my whole thought process is that, you know, we're looking at this, I mean, it's a gamble, because we may end up in the red, but, I mean, I don't, we're looking at these numbers, and if .6 is 1.68, maybe we might go .3, half of that. And that's 800,000, but we could vote as a board to move that out of fund balance, but it'll drop several days off of our...
How many days will that drop then, as she's moving it?
800.
Because we're talking, we've gone from 76 to...
He's working it.
Nine days? Eight? Eight is the change? 50, 60? It would take four days.
Four days?
800,000, four days. Okay, I made a suggestion. I'm not making a motion to increase property taxes. I'm just offering an opportunity to find a way to do it.
James, you have a comment?
I'm just really trying to find a way to not close fire stations. Can we go two slides forward? Nope, one back. Nope, one forward.
Go to the map, please.
It's the map.
Steve, how long has it been since the fire tax has been either gone down or come back up?
Slide back up one for me, Chairman.
That's it, that's the one.
Nope, nope. Slide back up. So, the last time that...
It's not that one.
It was reduced by a couple of percentage points in 2020, and then the last time was So, a few years ago.
We... Can we go to that map?
Yeah, go to the map, yeah.
We get a lot of folks that come in with some interesting ideas. We had some folks come in and say, "We should go to a kill shelter." We had folks come in and say, "We're spending too much on fire stations." And I'm really glad that we have this map, because we had several people come in and say, you know, "We don't use fire protection. We don't use fire protection, and yet, we're paying for it." And the map says very clearly otherwise. The map says very clearly otherwise. Everybody in this county uses it, and look at that heat map. Some use it more than others. And at the same time, I think some would be affected more than others by a longer wait time. I mean, a five-minute wait time is what we're at right now. That's, I mean, not wait time, but response time. A 27-minute response time, you know, 1941, that's going to be bad enough, but we'll have the city of Griffin to help us, whereas a 27-minute wait time in Sunset Beach Street could be catastrophic for the residents of Sunset Beach Street.
Commissioner Dutton, just a few months ago, our fire department actively worked CPR for a little over 20 minutes before the ambulance arrived and took over for that service. Without question, our guys are absolute heroes for doing that, that level of service. That's a long CPR.
That's a long time to do CPR.
That's a dead citizen with a 27-minute response time. That's a dead citizen.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
I hope everyone who's watching at home, watching here in the audience, understands that none of the five of us up here came in and knew exactly what we were going to do and had a plan, and we're not listening. That is not what ever happens, ever. So, I, you know, I've spoken to everyone on this board today multiple times, and every time, there's been a new idea and a new... So, when people come up and, you know, essentially accuse us of being like our folks in Washington, DC, that is not what happens on this board.
Well, when people actually take the time to reach out to you and call you and meet with you and discuss things with you, and you help them, and we've got the departments in place to do it, because we have a remarkable departments, departments that actually do this, you feel good about it, you think you've satisfied the needs of people. That's what we try to do, satisfy the needs. And whenever there's a point where you no longer can do that, it's troubling.
Then there's a problem.
You know, and a lot of times, you don't know that until, you know, there's a need. But we know that. So, eliminating, once again, eliminating some of these services today, tomorrow, the next day, may not be an issue, but let's talk about in the next few months. Let's talk about six months. What does that mean? You know, are we ready to do it? You know, and are you ready to do it? Are you ready to accept it? Those are the kind of things we need to all ask ourselves at the end of the day.
You know, and I don't want to toll anybody out, but, you know, I'm a lawyer, and people come into my office all the time and say, "You know, I Googled the other day, and can't you file a motion for..." And you're like, "That's nonsense. Like, that's not a thing." Like, I know, last night on Law &amp; Order, they said, "That's nonsense." Like, and as much as I love people coming in and saying, "We need to cut," my response is always the same. "What would you like us to cut? Come and look." I've begged and pleaded, "Please come and look at this budget. What fat is here? We've trimmed it and trimmed it and trimmed it." Dr. Ledbetter has done an amazing job cutting and recutting. Every year, we build from the ground up. There's none of this cost-plus stuff. There's none of this, "Well, you got to spend it, or you're going to lose it next year." We're going to totally redo your budget next year, and you're going to have to identify every single cost that you think you might have, and then justify it with receipts. And then, we bid out everything that we go, "I think we can save 10 bucks here if we bid it out privately." So, it's not that we're up here going, "Ah, it's fine, we'll just milk the taxpayers for more." It's how do we do this as lean and lean and lean as possible? And, you know, and yet, the proof of how lean we're doing it, we have two firemen per shift, per station. If somebody has a sniffle and calls out, we have to close a fire station. That's how close to the bone our budget is. Okay, you want us to cut? Where would you like us to cut? Where... With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, that's why your measure failed earlier. What would you like us to cut? Where would you like... Where are we coming up with this stuff? You know, I think, I think that personally, our assessments, the assessments, I think, are going to become, are higher than what we're currently estimating they're going to be. I think the amount of revenue that is coming in, or is going to come in, from the property taxes is actually going to be higher than what we've kind of estimated. That said, I want to point out again, you know, historians always say it's, it's, those who don't study history are doomed to repeat it, but those that do are doomed to watch everyone else repeat it. And it's kind of the same with people like myself who have, you know, not just for their profession, but their education and their hobby, study economics. It's like, it's so frustrating to watch, I don't know why inflation's going up, I don't know, you printed 80% of the money. So, I think inflation's going to continue to go up. I'd love to stop it. Boy, if there was something this board could do to stop it, I would. I'd be jumping up and down about it, but that's not anything that this board can tackle.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond to Commissioner Dutton? Commissioner Dutton, to tell you how lean this budget is... Commissioner Dutton, to tell you how lean this budget is, we've made an assessment of 99% collections for revenue. And in years past, we have made an assessment of 93. We're estimating that everyone will pay their taxes, and we are estimating that we will receive the maximum amount on local ops and sales tax moving forward for revenue. This is the leanest budget that I know how to present.
I think that the citizens need to see that it is our intention, as we continue to grow the commercial and industrial base, to continue to roll back this mileage rate as much as we can. The speed of government is, I mean, snails are outrunning us. Just look at the new airport. That said, I think it's important that we set the pattern of lowering the mileage rate, perhaps not to the full rate, because we'd have to slash all kinds of services that we can't even think of tonight. But the citizens need to know that the five of us have the intention, and will continue to have that intention year over year, of wanting to move this rate down. Why does Coweta County have a lower rate than us? I was there at court this morning. Drive down 16 and just count the warehouses. You know, why does Henry County drive down 155? Do you want Spalding County to look like that? Do you want Spalding County to look like that? Do you want to drive up 1941 and want Spalding County to look like 1941 in Clayton County? I don't. I don't.
Commissioner, the Henry County Board of Commissioners, even with all of the number of warehouses that they put in, went up three full mils this year on their mileage rate.
Because they're not even doing it right. You know, we have to do it right. But I think we need to signal to the citizens that it is our intention to pull this down as much as we possibly can, and yet still keep our service level high. So, I'm going to make a motion to set the mileage rate at a compromise rollback at 15.58.
Okay, it's 15.588 now, 15.58.
Second.
All right, so once again, number figure one, what does that mean, Dr. Ledbetter? What does that mean?
So, if a mil is.
Everybody needs to know what that's.
2.7276 million. All right, that's, that's under $100,000. I think our budget can take that number.
And what does that do for the taxpayer?
You got to figure it out.
I think it shows that.
Yeah, I will repost everything tomorrow if that's the.
Do we need to re-advertise the stuff? Please, Lord, don't.
You do not. If you go down, you were perfectly fine. We actually had the conversation with the Department of Revenue about that specifically.
I only wish that we could get more for our fire department. That's.
If we move to that level as James is proposing.
15.58 does not include the fire district tax. The fire district tax is completely separate. We do not have to advertise that. That is by resolution of this board, so where would the board make the recommendation for the fire district tax?
Oh, my God, I thought that was included in the 15 point.
It is not included in the fire district. It is not included in the county M and O.
Ms. Gwynn, could you talk to us, you brought up an issue with the fired, the fund balance? Could you mention that again to me?
Okay, my concern is that, in general, I can say over the past terms that I've been here, that every time that I have heard the budget presented, it was, we use this much of the fund balance to balance the budget. And so, I'm not saying that you can't do it, but I know that we can. But I also was here when we took $7 million of a fund balance to balance the budget, and then COVID came, and everybody had to have a mask, and everybody had to have a screen, and we had to spray the room, and, you know, everybody remembers that. We were not prepared for that. We were spending money that we didn't even have because we had used our fund balance. And the problem with using fund balance to that degree is that you will still have that same financial requirement the next year. So, you can't use fund balance to really balance your budget. But if we expect that there, and this is just an expectation, that there may be more revenue generated than we think, I think, you know, looking at whether it's .58 or .55 should be something that if we have to move something around, that would be much more manageable than trying to move something around for 1.6 million dollars, unless we're prepared to cut services. So, the thing about using the fund balance, we at our, we said we were going to do this, but generally, we try to put in our general budget this amount that will go into fund balance, which is something we definitely need to be doing budgeting going forward. But I just don't really feel like anything under $200,000 is really going to be significant.
Again, Commissioner, that's true. We have before taken out of fund balance, but at the end of the year, we put back in fund balance. Sort of the discrepancy between what we kind of overestimated. However, this year, we're $300,000 for the hand lighting building, and then 200 extra thousand dollars for its renovations. We didn't put anything back in fund balance this year. I mean, so, again.
Where?
Over mine no votes. That's what the board did. So, you know, if we're going to take on the front end from fund balance, we must be prepared to, on the back end, put it back. And if you guys come back next year and go, whoa, we're going to expand, and they need a new swing set, amen.
Yep, we agree.
Well, I thought we agreed this time, and yet I was the one of them, so.
All right, Ms. Gwynn, how far down are you willing to go? Fund balance, what number?
Commissioner Dutton said .15.5. Hey, there's a motion on the table for 15.58. I did. I was suggesting that we may go to .55.
You got to rescind your second, man.
Okay, let me just ask a question. Am I making anybody scared?
Look at that face. Yes.
Steve.
Okay, it'll be okay. Just breathe. Okay, I rescind that motion.
Does it have another second? Then my motion's dead on the line.
Okay. Motion to approve a mileage rate at 15.55.
And nothing for fire? Let's make sure we're covering.
Oh, no, no, I'm definitely for fire.
Not the 1.25 at this point.
The fire's not included in this motion.
All right.
We'll have to do resolution.
It's a separate resolution.
How much, how much money are we talking about with that? What was it?
1.15.5.
15.55. So, you're 225, 250.
I'll be willing to take a chance on that.
Where are we coming out of fund balance? Because you got to make that part of your motion. We got to balance this budget right now.
Okay, so that'll be my motion to, using the fund balance to submit a mileage rate of 15.55, and approximately $250,000 that's needed to balance the budget will come from fund balance, which will reduce our days of operating to 72.
Reduce it to 70.
I'm going to second that for, just so that we can get this balanced. I'm not sure exactly what that really does, what that, how significant that is. I don't think it is, but I'll second that motion.
All right, so, we went from 15.58.
15.588.
15.588 to 15, first you, we went to 15.58, and now we're going to 15.5.
15.5.
55.
55.
I think it's important that we roll the mileage rate back by an amount that our budget can still handle, so that we can still provide all the services, and yet continuously prove to the citizens that it is our intention to continue to roll this back. I'd love to roll it back faster, but we also got to pay firemen, and we also got to pay sheriffs, and we also got to pay animal control folks, you know.
Okay, motion on the floor. You can ask a question.
You got to call for a question, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a second?
You got to call for a question.
All right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Four. All those opposed, one. Motion passes. New mileage rate is 15.55.
Dr. Ledbetter, do you know when the last time the mileage rate has been this low? I know the last time was a historic low.
It's been a while, Mr. Chairman. It has been a while. I will get the numbers for you and present at our next meeting and show you the decline from the mileage rate.
I know that the mileage rate last year, which was, we're now lower than, was lower than it's ever been in my lifetime, so, and I'm 42.
We've been pretty high before, 19, 19. I just think that this, if our goal is to just work on trying to move the mileage rate back, you just have to keep going in that momentum. You have to, and so that's why I made the suggestion.
I think that that's advantage of the five of us. I said it at the beginning, the five of us, to be able to talk and think and work our way through it.
Mr. Chairman, can you tell us where you would ask for the mileage rate for the fire district tax? Because I heard some conversation about that.
All right, do I?
And the reason I'm asking is because that will make a difference for our next class, and our next class starts in January, so our team needs to know, so we know how many people to start hiring, if there's an opportunity to hire additional firefighters.
I mean, the fire tax is only for people who use the fire service.
That is correct.
Unincorporated.
Right. So, I don't, Stephanie, do I need to make a motion or recommendation or?
Yes, and then we'll put it in a resolution.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to accept the staff's recommendation to increase the fire tax by 1.25, which will bring it to no more than 4.7 mils. Is that what was on the paper?
Please, give him a second with this.
Give you just a second, please.
Take your time. Take your time. This is important.
Would you be so inclined as to set it at one mil above instead of the 1.25?
I will rescind my motion, and I will make a motion to.
You don't have a second?
No, I have a second.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so I rescind my motion, and I make a motion to increase the fire tax by one mil above the previous mileage rate per staff's recommendation.
Yes, that's staff's recommendation.
That's 2.1 million more for the fire district.
Correct.
I'll second.
What would that allow us to do as far as hiring firefighters?
It would afford us the opportunity to put one additional firefighter on each one of the shifts. It would exclude one of the paramedics, so we would only have two paramedics instead of the three.
I'd like to hear from the chair and Ryan.
I'm sorry.
You want to hear from y'all?
I'd like to hear from the chair and Ryan. Ryan's been awfully quiet.
Yeah, I've done some figuring. A lot of figuring. The fire tax is important, but our ISO is only really viewed or searched every five years. And I know it's important to have the people there. I would support a gradual increase up to that point over the next four years. One mil's a lot, which I know is a lot less than the regular mil, but still, it's an increase. I'm totally against it.
I believe our citizens have been hit hard enough. So, my answer is.
So, Mr. Chairman, in making your decision, and I respect where you are, but when I look at this map, and I see that Sun City is completely covered in calls for EMS that were called for people who were unconscious. Okay, if you only have two people running a fire station, that's only one person driving the truck, and if the other one has to provide services, you're short people. I mean, because at the end of the day, when we talked about this in budgeting, we talked about how important it was, first of all, that we didn't think it was safe to run a firehouse with two people. And then, secondly, we also knew that we were going to be required to have somebody who would really be able to provide medical care because we're having to do that. And that is why we decided to get the paramedics, is so that they would be that first responder who had the ability to do that. If, to me, if, rather than not allowing the fire stations to have one person, I'd just as soon shut down a fire station, because at least you could man the rest of them. But if, I mean, we made a decision that, based on the fact that we had to shut down firehouses because you can't operate a firehouse with one person there, that's a problem. That's a problem. And it's, with all due respect, Ryan, the cost of those fire trucks and the cost of paying a paramedic, basically a nurse's salary, because you're performing at that level, it's not going to go down. It's not, it's not going to go down. Everything costs more, just like the fire truck that we ordered that we thought cost $400,000 ended up costing almost a million.
Timing is everything.
So, so, yeah. We're not making this stuff up. So, when you say that you would like to increase over the course of the years, I just want you to have in mind that when, the next time EMS is called to come out there for an unconscious person at Sun City, because you see the dots, purple, unconscious person, every call for that district around Heron Bay and Sun City, they're going to have to wait. They're going to have to wait. They may call Wellstar, but we're the ones that they're expecting to come out there and provide that service immediately.
My, look at this heat map. All four of y'all have tremendously more calls than my district has. So.
Oh, my district is like full.
And it doesn't even show the city of Griffin here.
And can you tell me what their fund balance is right now on the fire tax?
Their fund balance is allocated for the cost of the vehicles that we have.
Payments over the course of time.
Yeah, they don't, they don't quite have, they don't, their fund balance is.
Yeah, they have very, very small fund balance, and it's all allocated against the cost of the vehicles.
And I have to remind all of us that a vast majority of the money that goes into the fire and EMS is grants. They work their butts off trying to get money to accommodate the stuff that they need to do. So, and I'm grateful for that. I want to thank y'all for doing that. But this is just not about this little pocket of money. You know what I'm saying? So, I just say, as a medical professional, scrimping on fire and emergency services is not, is not the answer.
That's not the answer.
It's not the answer to being able to make this happen. It's going to have to be something else. And I mean, and we should not, we shouldn't even remotely be talking about reducing personnel, because that was why we made the decision in the first place, is so that we will be able to provide a safe avenue for people to provide those services to folks.
And whenever we get the opportunity, like we're doing now, thinking about cutting safety, that's a problem from where we are. It's a problem.
It's easier said than done until you're the one waiting to, you know.
Would the board consider funding it half-year, so split the difference of 1.25 to 0.75, and then funding all the positions from January through July?
What happens after July? I'm lost there. Say that again.
Splitting the mileage rate half, so instead of funding the mileage rate at 1.25, fund it at 0.75, and funding the positions, the increase in positions from January through June 30th of 2025, funding it for half-year.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to follow your lead, so.
You know, we're talking about two parts. Remember how we, just not two months ago, we had Judge Thacker coming in here talking about, I need judges? There's a lot of people who need bodies in our, I think that, I wouldn't doubt that the sheriff's going to come in and say he needs more bodies to do that. We're talking about public safety and things like. We're talking about public safety and things like that to be able to do it. There's always that issue. Somewhere, got to make the hard choice and take the stand and say, I'm reducing taxes and I'm helping the citizens with what we're doing with them and how much it's going to cost. Because if we do it for half, that's still a price up. They didn't get the five hundred thousand, five hundred dollars this year from the governor. That's going to be another five hundred dollars on theirs, plus the rest of the stuff. I'm looking at the citizens and trying to say, how can we help them? I think the fire is doing an absolutely super job. Please don't misunderstand that.
They are.
And I think that maybe with some pay-as-you-go stuff, we'll be able to increase the fire. But it can't be.
No, you can't do that.
What?
It's funded through the fire district tax.
Everything for the fire department comes through the fire district tag. Nothing comes out of the general fund.
No, no, I I mean that, let's say that a fire truck comes in a hundred thousand dollars less than we bought it at.
We've already contracted, that won't happen.
Let's say that we don't hire the seventeen people.
Those are allocated positions for funds and.
Inside the fire district, right?
You you could use those, you could use those funds to offset for capital, but you couldn't hire additional personnel.
They're in personnel now, right?
That's correct. The allocation is there for the positions.
Into, we could hire or do something with people.
So, so it's currently budgeted for eighteen currently unfilled positions that if filled, we wouldn't have the same level of.
Overtime.
Overtime. But that would still give us a breadth for if people are calling out, to be able to call in somebody for overtime.
Well, people are always going to have to have vacation. People get sick and have a call.
That's currently, that's currently in the current budget.
Well, that's that's also why it is that some of the fire stations have to get closed down because one person gets sick and one person can't operate a fire station by themselves.
Right, that's why we had three hundred and twenty-five call-ins.
One per day.
One per day.
I know, I mean, is it imperative that we have to do the milage rate on this tonight?
We got to do it tonight.
On the fire?
On the fire? I mean, we've done the milage rate on property, right?
It's not imperative that you do it tonight, but we are delaying.
The tax bill's going.
The tax bill's going out.
Okay. Yeah, I'm I'm I, like I said, I don't, I'm certainly not going to support anything that reduces staff and certainly not, not the staff. I don't want to reduce anybody at nine-one-one because when I pick the phone up and call nine-one-one, I want somebody to answer it.
And we want law enforcement, sheriff's people to come when somebody's doing something to our house.
Right.
Yes.
And if if I fall down the stairs and break my hip, I want somebody to come and get me before two days afterwards. So, so I mean, and I mean, as far as I'm concerned, and this is nothing personal, Steve, I just assume you take some office assistants and not hire them before you not hire firemen. I mean, it's it's not, we're not required to do it, but people would be very upset if if they call the fire truck or they call EMS and nobody shows up. And they're not going to care about us saying, well, we had to shut down because we only had one fireman. We didn't have another person who could come out on the call.
We we have a motion and a second.
What is it?
You made the motion to increase by one mil above the current rate.
And you seconded it.
Yes, you did.
I did second.
Don't deny it now.
You can unsecond it if you want. You can call for the question, Mr. Chairman, there.
All right, let's make sure all of us know what the question is.
Oh, you want me to repeat my motion?
Yeah.
That the fire tax is being increased by one mil.
Fire district tax.
Fire district tax.
Fire district tax, all right. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed?
Mr. Chairman, you want to make a motion?
No, I'm I'm for keeping it exact, I'm sorry, I'm for keeping it exactly the same way it is right now.
Make the motion.
Yeah.
It's not required if you're not changing it.
Oh, we're not changing it, we don't have to, we don't have to move to.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so before you close up, help me to understand where where those costs are going to be paid for out of?
What are you talking about?
The cost of the fire trucks, are we?
Out of their current fund balance, that's all currently.
Yeah, that's all coming out of fund balance.
The increase was going to be an increase in number of officers and firemen.
So, so this this is decision not to add extra firemen.
Right.
And no, and no paramedics.
And no paramedics.
Wow, okay.
All right, item, item number two, adopt the Griffin Spalding County School System twenty twenty-four milage rate. Just so everybody knows, we don't have any, we just consolidate that, what's the right word in there?
This, we're like a pass-through or something?
Yeah, you're just, it's just a check.
Consolidated into ours so that the state only gets it from one place. So, do I have?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Four. All those opposed, like sign, one. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, who was the motion and second?
Go ahead and read it.
I'm sorry. All right, item number six, presentations and proclamation. Proclamation declaring October as the International Alpha Delta Kappa Month. I would ask the board to consider a proclamation declaring Oc- October as the International Alpha Kappa Delta Month. Commissioner Flowers, would you mind reading the proclamation?
Yes, I need a motion to approve this proclamation or accept this proclamation. I can make a motion, second.
I'll second the.
I have the motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Five, zero.
Mr. Chairman, I am very proud to read this proclamation, recognizing October as international, international Alpha Delta Kappa Month. Whereas women in education constitute a great portion of the nation's workforce and are constantly striving to serve their communities and nation in educational, cultural, and charitable programs, leading to harmony, happiness, and peace among all people. And whereas goals of Alpha Delta Kappa International Honorary Organizations for Women Educators are to honor outstanding women educators, to strengthen the education profession through commitment to diversity and inclusion practices that respect and value each person for their unique qualities, to nurture relationships and networking opportunities, to enrich personal and professional development, to support altruistic projects, grants, and scholarships with time and resources, and to embrace cultural differences and make an impact through world understanding. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Spalding County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize the month of October as International Alpha Kappa Delta Month in Spalding County, Georgia. In witness whereof, our chairman has hereunto set his hand and caused the seal of the county to be affixed this the seventh day of October in the year of our Lord, two thousand twenty-four, signed by Chairman Clay Davis and County Clerk Steve Ledbetter, Ph.D.
Can we have some people representing, please come forward, we'll get a photo.
This seems like we'll stand right there. And anybody else who wants to take, if you're standing on up, take.
If you're, if you're a member of this, come forward here. Quinn, are you in here?
I'm right behind you, Annie.
Okay.
One, three, one, two, three, and one more, please, one, two, three.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Janet.
Mr. Chairman, I also wanted to thank the proclamation writers for keeping it to one page. Let that be a lesson to all of the proclamation writers.
Do we still have a proclamation writer?
Yeah.
After today.
Other folks that come in and write proclamations that are three pages long.
We're continuing, thank you. Item number two, recreational dashboard. Ms. Kelly Carmichael will present the leisure service dashboard.
Ms. Carmichael, welcome back.
Thank you, good evening, commissioners, and I will be brief as possible.
Yay.
This presentation will provide you with valuable insights and knowledge of leisure services programming side of our business. And I'd like to begin by saying, oh, you're going a little too fast. I'd like to begin by saying that volunteers are among the most valued resources within leisure services. Our question that we're going to answer today is what is the value of volunteer services in recreation programming? We'll start with our senior center. Presently, there are thirty-five different recreation program volunteers. On a monthly average, there are one hundred and ninety-four volunteer check-ins. Each month, they put in three hundred and eighty-eight volunteer hours totaling four hundred and four thousand six hundred and fifty-six annual hours of volunteer time. They operate thirty-eight volunteer-led recreation programs. This would equate to two point five full-time staff positions. To give you an idea of how many people we're serving, the membership at the senior center presently sits at two thousand five hundred and twenty people. That does not include all of the other activities that are going on in that building. If you've been there at all, you would would see that. Fairmont Community Center, a vital facility in Fairmont community and in our entire county, volunteer-supported, award-winning events and programs such as Summer Pop Career Week, Breakfast with Santa, and Hot Shots Photography Class. This is just events, there are fourteen annual events that volunteers are a part of that totals three hundred and eighteen volunteers, giving a total of two thousand sixty volunteer hours in one year's time. Our youth sports are operated by many five oh one C-three organizations. Griffin Youth Soccer offers two season. In spring of twenty-four, they had four hundred and two players. In fall of twenty-four, five hundred and seven players. They budget an average in the in a year ninety-seven thousand dollars to operate those two seasons. In that program, there are fifty-six volunteers, giving five thousand nine hundred and fifty-two volunteer hours. The chart on the right gives you an idea of participation from since two twenty seventeen to current. Spalding United Youth Basketball, a five oh one C-three organization, they offer one season each year. Winter of twenty-four, two hundred and forty-eight players. They budget an average thirty-four thousand dollars for that season. They have thirty volunteers, giving one thousand three hundred and fifty volunteer hours during that season. Spalding Athletic Association, they provide baseball and girls' softball programs. They offer two seasons. In the spring of twenty-four, four hundred and ninety-two players. In the fall, let me, I did get an update since this was uploaded. Fall of twenty-four, two hundred and ninety-two players. They budget an average of a hundred thousand dollars to operate both of those programs for two seasons. They have seventy-five volunteers, putting in thirteen thousand five hundred volunteer hours. Spalding County Pickleball Association, a five oh one C-three organization, they have year-round programming and events. Their current budgeted expenditures, thirty-two thousand two hundred. Presently, fourteen volunteers, giving two thousand five hundred and twenty hours per year. Spalding County Youth Football, this is a Spalding County-operated program. We offer one season. For the twenty-four season, we have one hundred and ninety-one players. We budget, in the Spalding County budget, forty-four thousand dollars. The that budget is covered by generous sponsorships and fees to play the program. There are, in that program, there are fifty-four volunteers, putting in seventeen thousand four hundred and eighty volunteer hours. So, I'm, in a summary, oh. Hello. Did we timeout? Go back one more. There you go, thank you so much. Volunteer-operated sports programs save Spalding County's budget thousands of dollars. Combined budgeted expenses, it saves us two hundred and sixty-three thousand four hundred and ten from the leisure services budget. The staffing costs to replace their management and operations would, we would have to hire three full-time athletic coordinators at a hundred and seventy thousand three hundred and nine part-time athletic specialists at the value of two hundred and nine thousand seven hundred. That totals six hundred and forty-three thousand four ten that these volunteer organizations are keeping from the Spalding County budget. So, what is the value of volunteer resources within leisure services? We know volunteers give their time, travel, expenses, and personal resources selflessly for the betterment of others. Independentsector.org values each volunteer hour in the state of Georgia at thirty-one dollars and sixty-one cents. That dollar value equates comparatively to the number of hours that are, they're giving to our community at a one point five million dollars. And this is accumulation of all of the details that I've described. So, a total of forty-seven thousand five hundred and eighteen volunteer hours are donated through youth sports and senior programming. One point five million of volunteer time valued. And volunteer-operated athletic programs save Spalding County six hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred and ten dollars annually from the leisure services budget.
Question, great report.
Yes.
I read it before. Um, do we, um, when when we list these people as volunteering to help us, do we? I don't want to say that. Do do they know that that is the value of of the services that they're providing to us? I mean, I think it's important for them to know.
That's why we did this dashboard.
To know this, and if I came to the Spalding County webpage and and put in volunteering with this page, with this, with this populate.
It sure can be.
Okay, because I think that's important if someone wants to volunteer to do something, whether it's at the animal shelter or it's at reg services.
Yes.
Somehow, when they come to our webpage and search for volunteer or volunteer opportunities, I would love for them to be able to see this is what.
Absolutely.
What they're doing, and maybe even the same thing with other places, whether it's the elections office or animal shelter or whatever. But very good, I I thought it was a good.
Very good, Kelly.
Good.
Any other questions so far?
Any questions?
Mm-mm, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board of Assessors update. The Board of Assessors is here this evening to provide an update. The great Johnny McDaniel.
Johnny McDaniel, sixteen oh three Bevel Drive, Griffin, Georgia, Chairman of Board of Assessors. Chairman Davis, Commissioners, Dr. Ledbetter, it's a, it's a privilege to be here tonight. I'm certainly glad you scheduled me after the public comment. I'm certainly glad you scheduled me after the public comment.
Child.
I'm sure that was good planning on your part, Dr. Ledbetter, so here we go. What we're going to do, we've been here four times this year. Each time, we sort of walk through the process in a timeline, and tonight, we're here to kind of finalize everything and talk to you about the appeals. So, I'm going the wrong way. Seems like our values have not been going the wrong way, but anyway. Twenty twenty-four property values were mailed out in the form of assessments. Those were mailed out on June twenty-fourth of this year. There's forty-five days to appeal from the date of the mailing, and the appeal date deadline was August the eighth, 2024. You can see there how many assessments were mailed out, thirty thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine real property, which is what most people are interested in. Then, the next few slides are going to show you an example of how we tried to get the information out, that everybody should be aware that their notices were in their mailbox are on the way. This was on the notice of assessment itself, given the deadline for the appeal date. It was on the Q Public site. You can see there that the date of the mailing and the appeal date appeared. This was in the Griffin Daily News advising people that they had gone out. This notice was on several of the information monitors in the county offices, also showing the deadline date. And there were multiple mentions on social media. It even made it to that trusted news source, Spalding County Discussion Page. We received twelve hundred and ninety-six appeals this year. All those came in in a timely manner. This chart gives you an idea of about how they were spread out. There were thousand and forty-six residential, and you can see the numbers there. I won't bore you with that. But one thing I want to call your attention to is the COVA values. Why in the world they appeal COVA values, we don't know, because those are set by the Department of Revenue based on soil type. So there's really nothing they can do, but God bless them. This is a graph showing you how the appeals have played out in the last eleven years, back to 2014. And you can see the average of the appeals over those eleven years was eleven hundred and forty-five. So, why do owners appeal? The obvious thing is that they think their values are too high, so they file an appeal to see if we can come to an agreement on lowering those values. This year has been a little bit unique. We had people who claimed that their taxes went up, but their value didn't. It's already been mentioned, the homeowners tax relief grant, and I'll speak to that a little bit more in a moment. My values went down, but my taxes went up. Why are my estimated taxes so much higher than what I paid last year? And if House Bill 581 passes this year, that estimated tax will no longer show on the This just addresses the fact that the taxes went up for most people because of the homeowners' tax relief grant. Just a couple more things I want to point out to you about what we deal with, and we cannot deny anybody from filing an appeal. We can try to reason with them so that they understand that there's really no need to file an appeal. But we had one lady came down and filed an appeal because she didn't want to pay school tax. Had anything to do with appeal, but we can't say no. And we had another lady who came in at five minutes till five on August the eighth deadline and said her homeowners association told her she had to file an appeal. So we get all kinds of reasons. But again, the homeowners tax relief grant did appear on last year's property bills and not this year, won't be on this year. And some people saved as much as seven hundred and fifty dollars. That's not the average, but some people saved a good bit more. Georgia Code says that we have a hundred and eighty days to address an appeal that's submitted by the taxpayer. This year, there are, as of Friday, three thousand three hundred and forty-four parcels in Spalding County. We received twelve hundred and ninety-six appeals, and that equates to three point nine percent of the parcels that were appealed. Why is that important? Because Georgia Code says if your number of appeals exceeds three percent, three percent or more, then you get an additional one hundred and eighty days to resolve the appeals. So, we did have three point nine percent, so that qualified for the extra one hundred and eighty days. So, we've set a goal to try to get all these appeals worked within the initial one hundred and eighty days, and we're going to show you a little bit about our progress. As of today, we, as of Friday, I'm sorry, we have addressed, resolved, or completed, or scheduled for BOE hearing forty percent of all those appeals. That leaves sixty percent that are active. And we still have a hundred and twenty days left on the initial one hundred and eighty. The Tax Assessor's Office will reply to each one of those appeals. We'll get the appeal in, review it, and do one of two things. We'll either agree that the value is too high, make some adjustments, and in that case, we send out a thirty-day letter. And the taxpayer has thirty days to respond to that, and if they accept the value, the new value that we sent out, then everything's done. Otherwise, it goes to the Board of Equalization. The other thing we do is if we think we're right, then we'll send out a no-change letter and notify the taxpayer that we are forwarding that appeal to the Board of Equalization. So the Board of Equalization, one of the first things that happens there is the clerk of court will send out a letter to the taxpayer advising them of when they have been scheduled and the time and date of the hearing. And they do get one opportunity to reschedule. Taxpayers are advised to bring their evidence to the BOE. You'd be amazed at how many people come empty-handed, but they are advised to bring all their evidence that they have. They also have to submit that to the Board of Assessor's Office within seven days of their hearing. They need to bring, if they have an appraisal, a fee appraisal, they need to bring that with them, any renovations that might have been done to the house. If it's a rental property, they have to bring recent rent rolls to provide what the income is, because that's not necessarily done on an assessment basis. We already have BOE hearings scheduled into the middle of December, and we are working to appeal those, get those appeals worked as soon as possible. You have any questions? I do want to leave you with one thing. You're going to have House Resolution 1022 and House Bill 581 on the ballot this year. When we went for our revenue training this year, we spent six hours in discussion with the Department of Revenue, and we got an hour and a half with ACCG representative here in this room. You're going to get two sentences on the ballot, and they could be a little bit misleading, but understand that it is much more complex than what you're going to see on the ballot. There are a lot of tentacles to this thing, so make sure you do your research and understand the impact and effects of those two bills when you go to vote.
You said 581 and what?
H.R. 1022. H.R. 1022 calls for a constitutional amendment, and it has to pass in order for 581 to go into effect. And if they pass, they go into effect January one of this year. That's the one that sets the three percent cap on property value increases. It only affects homesteaded property. And one of the things that Robbie and I think about is it undermines fair market value and it destroys uniformity, which the tax laws are based on. So, it is a very, very complex proposition, and it's going to have a lot of far-reaching effects. So make sure you understand what you're voting on, and don't just go by those two sentences. Thank you very much for allowing us to appear. We probably won't be back this year, much to your dismay, but we will start this all over again next year if you so desire. But we thank you for the opportunity to inform and educate the board and any of the citizens that might be watching over.
Thank you, Johnny.
Thank you, Johnny.
The fact that y'all have already done this many of the appeals, the fact that y'all have already done this many appeals in the first sixty days, that's fantastic.
Yes.
That's fantastic. Like.
Yeah, that's our goal. Robbie has been doing a fantastic job, Robbie and the staff, and they care, so they're trying to get these appeals worked and get the taxpayers, not necessarily what they want, but what they're going to get.
Johnny, has the BOE still seeing a lot of people who miss appointments?
I'll let Robbie speak to that.
Yes, sir. The ones we've had so far, I could probably name on one, show you on one hand the times that people have actually shown up. It's still an ongoing thing where people just don't show up. And there are occasions when people do show up that they don't really have any evidence other than it's too much or it's too high. So, that was one of the reasons that Johnny wanted to kind of get the word out. This is kind of the things that you need to bring in order to support your values. So, we're, like I say, we've got them scheduled. We try to do at least two a week, and we're already in, like I say, scheduled through probably the middle of December.
Thank you. Johnny mentioned 581. At least on my sample ballot, it doesn't say 581. I've had a number of people contact me and say, I thought we were going to vote on 581. It's the, as Johnny has said, it's the constitutional amendment that's on my sample ballot. And if you don't know the difference, people are calling and saying, hey, you've been telling me House Bill 581. I don't see it on my sample ballot anywhere. What's going on? So it's, the constitutional amendment causes 581 to happen.
I believe you also said that link from that ACCG meeting that where they outlined, is that posted somewhere on our website so people can get to it?
Yes, ma'am.
We need to make sure people know that, if they want to go back and just kind of review that.
And just so you know, it will appear, 1022 will be the first item, first measure you vote on. Then there will be another one that calls for a tax court, and then the last one will be, there is a short reference to 581, but let me just, if you don't mind, let me read to you what it says there. "Do you approve the act that increases an exemption from property tax for all tangible personal property from seven thousand five hundred dollars to twenty thousand?"
Has nothing to do with?
Nothing to do with, so do your research. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Johnny. Once again, great job. We appreciate it, Robbie. We appreciate what you're doing every day.
Mr. Chairman, I actually have a document that I will share with all of y'all that ACCG and GMA put out jointly that's about, it's just frequently asked questions about House Bill 581. It is very, very informative, and it's, some of it is in layman's terms, anyway. Some of it is not.
Okay. We need a translator.
We need that part, I can tell you.
Item number four, update on meeting EPD stormwater requirements. Spalding County is considered an MS4 county because we are permitted by the United States Environmental Protection Agency and the Georgia Environmental Protection Department as a municipal, separate storm sewer system, MS4. This means that the county must implement a stormwater management program to protect water quality and flooding. This evening, David Allen, our community development director, will share with us more information about stormwater management.
Thank you. Good evening. Community Development has been working with a consultant to meet all of our past and present EPD stormwater requirements, as the MS4 reporting Chairman alluded to. Part of these requirements is to provide educational material to the public concerning proper processes for stormwater practices. So as part of that, we passed out some flyers, our department, me and Brandon Wright from my department, at one of the booths at the fair back on September twenty-first and twenty-second. We had an informational booth there. We passed out flyers and engaged with some of the participating public there. So this fulfills part of our educational component with our MS4 reporting. There is the first flyer on the board. It talks about what illicit discharges, improper discharges into our bodies of water can do in terms of pollution like oil and grease, things of that nature, what the effects it has. The next one is about construction in the neighborhood, various houses, things coming up, grading being done, silt fence, stormwater protection that protects that. And the last flyer is about proper lawn care in terms of mowing links, chemicals, and things of that nature. So it was just a good educational component to do at the fair. People seemed pretty receptive to it, and there will be some other educational components as the year goes on. So I just want to update the board for that and document that we had indeed done this to fulfill our requirements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for him?
I do. I think that's very, I mean, when I looked at it on the pre-agenda, I thought, well, this catches your eye, and it has very good information on this, plain and simple, even a child could understand it. What I wanted to ask, and maybe asking David and asking Steve at the same time, do we have any requirement when we know that property is within a hundred-year floodplain? What is our responsibility as a stormwater agency in making sure that things are done like that? Or even when we've had, I think we had a bridge that had some damage to it. Was that because we didn't do something stormwater-wise to prevent that erosion or that damage? I'm just trying to figure out where, I know we're behind already, but how, I know this is the first step to moving the education piece, but I'm just trying to figure out what it will look like for us once it's up and running. Will we start with ravines next to the bridges, or do we start at subdivisions? We start on nineteen and forty-one. So, maybe that's part of the plan, but.
Yes, ma'am. That's a big part of the plan that we discussed last meeting when the board approved the stormwater utility maintenance crew that operates under TJ's purview. We have about four hundred easements, give or take, that we have not managed in two and a half years. We've just not had personnel to do it. And now we're in a position where we're slowly standing up a crew to clean back those easements, and that is our first responsibility, is to clean back those easements. And then we can get back into cleaning around the streams and the bridges. Because you're absolutely right. As the water increases and it takes away the shrubs and the trees and the bushes that are around the bridges, the turbidity, the water starts to circle around the bridge and deteriorates the underlying portions of the bridge and creates damage. And that was one of the main reasons why Moon Road was in the shape that it was in. The turbidity got a hold of it and actually just washed out underneath the bridge. And we have a responsibility to manage that stormwater, and that's what the MS4 affords us the opportunity to do. It also provides us with the ability to issue LDP permits. So the land disturbance permits that we are able to issue affords us, as a county, to better manage our planning as we move forward. Without the ability to have an MS4 or be able to permit for LDPs, we limit ourselves in our ability to properly plan what goes in certain locations, because we have to rely on the state to support us in that endeavor.
So have we not been doing anything with LDPs up until now?
We have just been issuing LDPs for the developments that are going in and around our community. A few have been over on AKB, and we do have that ability to issue the LDPs. We also have Brandon, who works for David, who is certified to go and inspect the property to make sure that the developers are making sure that the stormwater is not running off and taking silt or other contaminants across somebody's property line.
So, in the areas where we have had flooding in the past, and I know there's a couple of spots, is there something that we can do stormwater-wise that would help mitigate those spots that always seem to be at danger whenever there's a lot of rain?
So that was the, what you did last session was actually step two for that plan. The first position was the flyovers that support and help our Tax Assessor's Office for the assessments. That provided the county an opportunity... That provided the county an opportunity to use that data for step three, which is to provide the data out to an engineering firm for understanding our impervious surface. Because we need to know where the impervious surface is located so that we can manage that stormwater runoff in a much better way. The more developments we bring into our community, the more we're gonna have to manage the water as it relates to stormwater because it flows in a different direction. And we need to, we need to engage in the engineer to support and help us with mitigating the water and where it goes. We're sitting on a shelf, half of the community, Highway 1941 and west goes to the Flint. And the other portion of the community east of 1941 goes to the Tawalanga. And we have an obligation to move that water in the appropriate direction. And in order to do that, we've got to put in the stormwater drains and manage the water off of the impervious surfaces much better than we have in the past. And as we grow, there's gonna be much more requirement for us to do that. And David has put us in a great position to do just that. We've been through step one, which was the flyover. Now we're in step two, which is TJ's minimal stand-up stormwater utility crew to help take care of the easements. And then step three comes from the perspective of coordinating with an engineer to understand the stormwater runoff.
So I'm gonna ask you one more question, just because I'm pissed off about the, about the fire attacks. So Steve, like when we do a detention pond, is there someplace where the water to run once the whole thing gets filled up?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, see, I didn't realize that. I'm thinking it just fills up and then it just keeps coming out, spilling out on the side. Because I've seen that on 19 and 41, so...
Yes, ma'am. If they're not well-maintained, they do spill out onto adjoining properties. And that's one of the things that Brandon and David's team has, or David through Brandon, has been able to support and help us with, just in the last six months, is going out to these property owners and making sure that the detention ponds are well-maintained and that the spillover system is designed and adequately maintained to support the water leaving the facility so that it can travel to either the Flint or the Tawalanga.
So once it gets in the pool, detention pool, it has the ability to flow out to hit a creek or something somewhere else? That's kind of just a holding spot.
Normally, but then the detention pool is for if it floods. That's what that's for. And then it slowly comes out that creek.
Okay.
But it can overwhelm it, you know? Remember, the detention pond is designed to allow water to leave, but not silt or other materials. So a great example would be to ride over to our new aquatic center and take a look at the detention pond. You will see the standoff in the middle and the, what appears to be a venting system so that the water can leave is about this high above the, the rock. Because that affords just the water to leave, not the silt.
Okay. Okay, that's my last question. That's as much anger as I could get up to talk about.
Item number seven, citizen comments. Speakers must sign up prior to the meeting and provide their names, addresses, and topics they wish to discuss. Speakers must direct your remarks to the board and not to individual commissioners or to the audience. Personal disagreements with individual commissioners or county employees are not a matter of public concern, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. The chairman has the right to limit your comments in the interest of disposing of the county's business in an efficient and respectful manner. Speakers will be allocated three minutes to speak on their chosen topics as they relate to matters pertaining to the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners. No questions will be asked by any of the commissioners during citizen comments. Outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. Common courtesy and civility are expected at all times during the meeting. No speakers will be permitted to speak more than three minutes or more than once unless the board votes to suspend this rule.
Mr. Chairman, one person has signed up to speak this evening, Ms. Michelle Dregas.
Michelle Dregas, 312 Whispering Pines Way, Griffin, Georgia. Good evening again, commissioners. For two years, I have been seeking answers as to when and where the almost 13 million in ARPA COVID relief funds were to be used. I know the funds were available for the cleanup after the tornadoes, but have been paid back with FEMA and GMA funds. I do know that the ARPA funds have to be designated to be used by December 31st of this year, and they must be used by December 31st of 2026. I also know that 2.93 million were placed in the Spalding County Water Authority account. I completed an open records request for a list of the designations for the remainder of the 10 million in ARPA funds and received this management's discussion and analysis from Ms. Dai dated June 30th, 2023. Quite a few pages. In the meantime, during the June 2024 financial report presented to the board in July of this year, the ARPA funds showed at 3,098,980. But on August 31st, 2024, the financial report given by Ms. Dai in September, the ARPA funds no longer showed up on the update. First, the ARPA funds were to be used to pay the overages of the Aquatic Center. Then the citizens were told that the SLOSS funds were enough to cover the entire cost of building the Aquatic Center. So where are the $10 million in ARPA funds? When and how have the funds been used? This is why the citizens requested a forensic audit to be completed. We want complete transparency on how funds are spent. We need to know when the forensic audit will be complete and when the results will be available to the citizens of Spalding County, and we need to know where, when, and how the ARPA funds have been or will be spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight, minutes. Consider approval of the minutes of the Spalding County Board of Commissioners' special call meeting on September 16th, 2024. I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes of September 16th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Or, okay, there's two, items one and two, isn't that the same thing? One says September 16th work session, and the other says September 16th extraordinary session.
You had three meetings that day.
There was three meetings that day.
Oh, yeah, I'll be doing too much.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the first one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the multiple work sessions on September 16th, 2024, as listed in items one and two under the minutes.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Uh-uh.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion passes. Thank you. Consent agenda. Consider approval of the following renewal 2025 alcohol licenses for retail sale of beer and wine. This time, I'd like to ask Dr. Ledbetter to please read the locations for the license renewals into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, High Falls Country Store, 2662 High Falls Road, Griffin, Georgia, 30224, no violations. Ringgold Grocery, 4243 Jackson Road, Griffin, Georgia, 30223, no violations. Nash Food Mart, 1511 Vaughn Road, Griffin, Georgia, 30223, no violations. 362 Express, 1600 Williamson Road, Griffin, Georgia, 30224, no violations. A1 Food Mart, 1650A North Hill Street, Griffin, Georgia, 30223, no violations. Amon Food Mart, 3970 North Expressway, Griffin, Georgia, 30223, no violations. Sitco, 1639 North Hill Street, Griffin, Georgia, 30223, no violations. JV's Corner, 1700 Zebulon Road, Griffin, Georgia, 30224, no violations. Copeland Grocery, 1578 High Falls Road, Griffin, Georgia, 30223, no violations. S&amp;M Grocery, 3244 Fayetteville Road, Griffin, Georgia, 30223, no violations. Griffin Food Mart, 2295 North Expressway, Griffin, Georgia, 30223, no violations. Race Track number 2495, 1638 US Highway 41, Griffin, Georgia, 30224, no violations. Race Track number 182, 4200 North Expressway, Hampton, Georgia, 30228, no violations. North Food Mart, 4290 Noonan Road, Griffin, Georgia, 30223, no violations. Family Dollar, number 322131642, North Hill Street, Griffin, Georgia, 30223, no violations.
Thank you. Are there any locations the commissioners would wish to remove from the consent agenda for further consideration?
I'm sorry.
If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Four zero, motion carries. Thank you. Item two, consider approval of the following renewal 2025 alcohol licenses for retail sale of package store. Sam's Package Store, 1301 North Hill Street, Griffin, Georgia, 30223, no violations. Zatella Express, 4319 Noonan Road, Griffin, Georgia, 30223, no violations. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Four zero, motion carries. Consider approval of the following renewal of 2025 alcohol licenses for retail sale of consumption on premise. George Francis Crosby, Griffin Moose Lodge, 1435 Zebulon Road, Griffin, Georgia, 30224, no violations. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Consider approval of the following renewal of 2025 alcohol licenses for retail sale of wholesale distribution. William J. Madison Jackson Beverage, 915 South Pine Hill Road, Griffin, Georgia, 30224, no violations. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. New business. Consider adoption of the human resource policy, personnel policy. We had an opportunity to discuss the human resource personnel policy during the workshop earlier this afternoon. Is the Board of Commissioners ready to proceed with consideration of the personnel policy? If so, do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, due to the explanations provided today by the Human Resources Director, I would like to make a motion to amend and approve recommendations for changing vacation accrual dates for all employees.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
We have fantastic employees, and we want to keep them, we want to reward them, and incentivize them to continue working as hard as they do.
Well said, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Consider approval of the SDS Water Service Area Map Revision. We had an opportunity to discuss this agenda item during the workshop earlier today. Is the Board of Commissioners ready to proceed?
Yes.
Does everybody know what this is about? I'll ask the general manager to step forward and talk. This is specifically about a map. So everybody makes sure they're, they understand it. And what we saw once before, Joseph.
So what you're looking at is a service delivery strategy map that has been revised based on the one that was approved by DCA. The difference is, the city of Griffin used to sell water retail to properties outside of Spalding County. Based on the current water sales agreement that was signed, and end of 19, or 2019, took effect January 1 of 2020, the city of Griffin is only allowed to sell wholesale out our water mains, not retail. So based on the contract, they revised it, so this map just puts it back in place.
We had places inside of other counties that we provide, and we just eliminated it so it only covers Spalding County. All right, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. Did we not confer with the Water Authority when we submitted this for SDS?
We did.
Okay, so why are we changing it? Why are we revising it?
Because there were properties outside of the county that were being serviced, and we were highlighting those on the map. We are no longer highlighting those because they're not ours.
So, and the pink is the private sewer companies? Is that, what's the pink?
No, the pink is areas that were swapped in the 95 agreement, where the county or the Water Authority and the city swapped customers. So the, I was not aware of the map that the city of Griffin provided showing the parcels. That actually came out from the audit, the customer audit that the Water Authority has required the city of Griffin to conduct.
So those pink areas are served by whom?
The city of Griffin.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
But they're in the county.
They are in the county, yes.
So, but we relinquished and gave them permission to provide water service in those areas.
That's correct. It's Exhibit C in the 1995 agreement, and it carried forward in the 2020 agreement.
Okay.
The only thing that changed was the language in the 95 agreement said that the Spalding County Water Authority could only serve customers outside Spalding County as long as the city of Griffin allowed for it to happen. Well, they never allowed for it to happen, so they served retail customers off our water lines, and we weren't getting any transmission fees for it. So we kind of asked the question, they realized, yes, that's correct. So they took it off the map, and we are waiting to get those customers back in our customer base.
Motion to approve.
I thought we already had one, sorry.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Thank you. Consider appointment of two architectural firms in support of Spalding County. We had the opportunity to discuss this agenda item during the workshop earlier today. Is the Board of Commissioners ready to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of...
On the, on the thing.
Of a name, LDD Blue Line and CPL, as contractors for future architectural work that we'll need to do.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Good job getting this done. All right, report of the county manager.
You'll report. Thank you. Nope, you went 124. Oh, maybe not. All right. So I had stuff on the screen.
I don't even know.
I don't even know. I think I have it all in my head.
Okay.
So Airport Road Park, they put the concrete in this week, and they will begin resurfacing next week. So give us a few weeks, and we'll be ready to open the park back up for the walking trail.
What did they do with the, like the slide and stuff? Did we just check it, or?
The playground?
Yeah.
It's being replaced.
Yeah, it's being completely replaced. TJ, what did we do with the old equipment that was no longer safe for the kids?
For liability purposes, we have to take it to the landfill.
Why you can't take it to the metal?
Right. To answer the question specifically, I believe you're asking on Facebook, it was part of the contract that the contractor was to haul this particular equipment away. So that was factored in to most likely a reduced price because he probably did recycle it. But we are unable to keep it, give it away, donate it for liability purposes.
That makes sense.
Okay.
The same reason, the same reason UPS can't sell a brown truck. The, the other piece that I actually had on the screen was the, the great work that the team has done for the resurfacing under T-SLOSS, 71.81 miles of resurfacing to date. So thinking that this is only year three, and there are two years left for our T-SLOSS program, we should move well into the 100-mile mark for T-SLOSS. Very proud of the team. They've done a great job at overseeing it, making sure that if CW Matthews had a challenge or an issue, that they noted it. And kudos to CW Matthews, they did a great job at coming back and repairing a few spots, but they have really been doing a good job at resurfacing our, our community's roads. Happy with what they've done for us. The other piece that I wanted to share is that we had 138 animals, and I think you heard that earlier tonight. We had 138 animals in the animal shelter this morning, 25 cats and 113 dogs. We are set up to...
We are set up to deploy the trailer should FEMA ask for it, and they've already started to make some phone calls FEMA has in response to Milton coming into Florida because we anticipate that the racetrack in Hampton will be used again this year for, for trailers coming in in support of the hurricane that's going to come through. Please be weather aware. Very proud of the team from last week. We only had one hundred calls during the hurricane. The good Lord was great to us, and I'm very thankful for that. As soon as the hurricane made landfall, it wobbled to the east, and by two-thirty, it was very clear that Spalding County was no longer the point of focus for the storm. Because initially FEMA, GEMA, and all of the weather people were telling us that the storm was headed directly to Spalding County. So by two-thirty in the morning, everything seemed like we were in good shape, and at four-thirty in the morning, the team started going home because the call volume had really depleted. Just, I, I can't say thank you enough to the team. They did a fabulous job. They had prepared all day. Many of us had been up for more than twenty hours in support of the, the hurricane coming on shore. And my heart goes out to those who were in South Georgia, over in Augusta, Tennessee, and North Carolina. Our very own Chief Polk was called by GEMA to support and help Ware County. So he and a couple of our guys spent the week in Ware County, helping them recover from the storm damage. And as Chief Polk shared with us this morning, we are in far better shape because of the experience we went through last year to know how to respond to events like, like we had last year and like Ware County had just a few weeks ago. So kudos to the team for going and supporting our brothers down in South Georgia. Mr. Chair, that's all my update.
All right, Deputy County Manager?
I don't have anything. Chairman Davis, Dr. Ledbetter covered mine, what I wanted to say.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Nothing. I'm just not, little disappointed with the Milage vote tonight, particularly with dealing with our fire department. I think we, our team goes above the, goes above and beyond the extra mile, and I'm not sure if we actually did our part as far as helping them out. Little disappointed, but as always, we'll get through it.
Okay. Commissioner Dutton?
I almost forgot something. I want to start off by saying, no one is closing the garbage collection sites.
Child, you don't know.
No one is closing the garbage collection sites.
You don't know now.
They came up tonight. I want to reiterate that there was no vote tonight to close it. They remain open as, and no one has plans to close them. The garbage collection centers are currently open. That said, we, we were able to roll back the Milage rate tonight. The Milage rate and what the tax rate is, is, is based on this triangle I keep talking about. The service level, the tax rate, and the level of industrial development. We can't not have industrial development, a high service level, and a low tax rate. That, that, that doesn't work. And so we have a higher tax rate than some of the surrounding counties because we have a lower industrial base, significantly lower industrial base. So, you know, these things have to give. That said, we did lower it tonight, and we, I, I, I'm very heartened by my fellow commissioners on the board who signaled that we want to continue to lower it in the future. We didn't provide extra funding for the fire department. And I, I think that we need to think about what that funding could mean. If there's a twenty-seven minute response time in Sun City Peachtree, people literally can die. Us not voting for that may have, may over the next year lead to the death of some of our valued citizens. So, not just in, in your district, but in all over.
I agree.
We need to think about that in, in that sort of terms the next time we think, well, let's make the Aquatic Center free. Well, let's, let's buy this building. That'd be a neat project. How, how many more firemen, how many more EMTs could we have hired for that same amount of money? Every time, I mean, when I was in college and I was super poor, every time I would spend a dollar, I'd think, how many one-dollar hamburgers can I buy with this? You know what I'm saying? Like, and how long would that have fit me? And that's, that's what we need to think about. When we spend any dime of the, the citizens' money, we need to say, how many more firemen would this have gotten us? How many EMTs would this have gotten us? How many fire stations wouldn't have to be closed if we'd have spent it there instead of here? Again, we didn't have the votes tonight, but I, I do want to end on a positive note, and this is, this is something really cool that I'd like to share. I got to go out as a guest out to Salt Lake City over this past weekend. I was, I was moved, enlightened, and edified by the, the General Conference of the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints that I got to go to. They gave us a tour of Temple Square, and I want to highlight one particular part of it, the, the family tree, the family history center they have there. There is more genealogical records there from all over the world, every country since, I mean, it's unbelievable, than anywhere else on the planet. It's unreal. They have a specific area dedicated to African-American genealogical history, and I was so impressed by it. They have some of the listening booths like we have in the African-American Heritage Museum. And I, I said to the, the African-American sister that was there, we have something like this. I would love to try to link our two resources together, and they, they just thought that was a fantastic idea. We would love, love, love to, to have access to yours and give you full access to ours. How do we do that? And I was able to talk to some of the officials that, that coordinate folks going, going out to, you know, to show, you know, show off this kind of stuff. And I said, boy, it sure would be great to bring a delegation from my county out here and show them this, this stuff and try to figure out a way. And they said, we will, let's make that happen, absolutely. So I'm going to work with them and, and try to see how many folks they're going to get to.
Congratulations, that's a good effort.
Bring out. So I hope to, hope you ladies will certainly at the very least join me, but, you know, I mentioned also the, the museum staff and, you know, other, other folks in the community. I, I would love, love, love. And they're, they're all for it. They, you know, the more connections they can make as far as family research and stuff goes. One of the African-American ladies that was there was able to trace, I don't want to overstate this, but like she knew which, not just country, but which tribe she was from in Africa because of their intense amount of, I mean, like, it was, it was incredible what they, what they were able to do. So I'm, you know, if I learn nothing else, it's that Jesus lives and He loves you.
Cool, okay. Thank you. Commissioner Flowers-Taylor? Nothing? Vice Chair?
All I got to say is, I've been in gun battles, I've been in fights, I've went up to talk to pretty girls. By far, the most stressful and hardest thing I have to do is what we do tonight. And I said, first three years was a piece of cake, the last two, it sucked. So, I mean, that's, so I think Ms. Rita had a good idea, so.
Another good idea by Ms. Rita.
Another good idea, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Two and twelve years.
You got twelve years, buddy.
All right, anything from our county attorney?
No, sir.
Charlie, you have anything? Doctor, you have anything? Anything else from anybody? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, we're adjourned.